To ask everyone to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing. And to remember all those serving across the world, and especially to keep in mind all those that were affected severely with yesterday's severe weather that went through the area. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank you for attending the Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting of May 16, 2018. I have Robert Anzalone to my right. To my left, I have Sandra Cabicleon, Chris Chabelli, Rich Catagio, Secretary Gil Nogal. All the way over to my far left, we have Dennis Lindsay, engineer, Jonathan, our planner. We have Rick, our attorney, and John, our traffic consultant. And I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. Board members, have you had a chance to review the minutes from May 2nd?
Yes.
And if so, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is AT&amp;T/ New Singular Wireless Arden Review Resolution for Recertification of an Existing and Previously Approved Co-location at the Arden House Telecommunication Tower. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 233 Block 1, Lot 6. You can take the podium there, and you can put the button on so the green light's there, okay? And you can just state your name for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Kristin Motel from the law firm Cuddy &amp; Fader, here on behalf of the applicant, AT&amp;T. We understand that there's been, well, for this matter, a draft resolution prepared for tonight's meeting. We've had a chance to review that, and we find the conditions acceptable for the special use permit renewal.
Okay, thank you. Consultants, anyone want to... Any comments on this application for the resolution for me to read?
Nothing further here.
Rick?
There's going to be just a couple of very small changes to the resolution that was previously circulated. I didn't want to circulate another one to cause confusion. And these recommendations, these modifications, were the results of conversations between the applicant and Kelly Naughton, in which we believe that they were reasonable requests for very slight modifications to the resolution. So I'll bring them up as we get to the...
Thank you. Board members, with that being said, do I have permission to start reading the resolution of approval?
Yes.
This is a recertification of site plan and special permit for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC in Perrins AT&amp;T at Arden House.
And before you skip to what you normally skip to, in the nature of the application, on the second-to-last line of that paragraph, near the end, it had said nine carriers. There are actually only five carriers. There were certain applications that talked about that there's a total of nine antennas, but it's actually five carriers.
Perfect. Thank you. So then I'm going to jump to page three, resolution of approval, and everyone says last revised May 11, 2018. Number one, pursuant to the Village of Woodbury Code subsection 310-38, letter P, number one, the applicant or its successors and assigns must apply for recertification of this special permit every five years, or the permit shall cease to exist. Such recertification must be made between 12 to six months prior to the five-year anniversary of the effective date of this special use permit, five years from the date that this fully executed resolution is filed with the village clerk. Prior to... Prior to issuance of a certificate of compliance, the applicant shall comply with the outstanding provisions of subsection 310-38, letter P, number one, letter H of the village code to satisfaction of the village engineer. Three, all the conditions attached to the prior resolution of approval for site plan and special permit for the New Singular Wireless PCS LLC in Perrins AT&amp;T filed with the village clerk on September 17, 2013, and amended resolution of approval for site plan and special permit filed with the village clerk on August 28, 2014 are hereby incorporated into this resolution as if set forth at month herein.
And an addendum to that sentence would be, comma, except to the extent as specifically modified by subsequent resolutions. So that you have made some modifications after the 2014, and this simply recognizes that fact.
Okay. Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Christine, you're okay with it?
Yes, thank you.
Number four, all conditions attached to the original grant of site plan and special permit approval for the existing Monopole location, as amended from time to time and including all requirements for structural integrity reporting and findings, shall remain in full force and effect and are incorporated herein by reference, except to the extent as specifically modified by subsequent resolutions. Five, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC in Perrins AT&amp;T, together with the existing cellular carriers using the tower, shall be jointly and severally responsible for compliance with the terms of this special permit and for the safe and proper maintenance of the site at all times. Six, prior to the issuance of certificate of compliance, the applicant shall update the Village of Woodbury Building Department's records with the name, address, and telephone number of the current emergency contact person for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, AT&amp;T in Perrins, in Perrins, who must be available on a 24-hour basis for purposes of notification regarding code and resolution compliance and for emergency and maintenance purposes. Number seven, the use and performance of the applicant's antennas approved herein shall be accomplished in such manner so as best not to interfere with any emergency services, communications within the Village of Woodbury. The applicant binding itself and its successors and assigns agrees that in the event that its operations or equipment approved by this resolution interferes with any emergency communication systems, that it will fully cooperate with the village to identify said interference. The failure to correct any interference issue shall require that the applicant or its successors and assigns be directed to appear before the planning board for further discussion and possible modification and/or refaction of this special permit consistent with applicable federal law. Eight, the applicant must maintain at its own expense all permits and licenses required by the applicable rules, regulations, or laws, and said permits and licenses must be maintained in full force and effect for as long as required by the village or other governmental entity or agency having jurisdiction of the applicant as required on the Village Code subsection 310-38D, number 19. Nine, as required by Village Code subsection 310-38D, number 24, the applicant shall notify the board of any intended modification of the wireless telecommunications facility, including the replacement of or any change to the applicant's antennas and/or ground equipment other than routine maintenance, and shall reapply to the board prior to performing any such modification, replacement, and/or changes necessary. If I'm going too fast, anyone just stop me. Number 10, prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance, the applicant must prove that all bonds and liability insurance as required to be maintained by subsection 310-38SNV of the village code are still in force at a full force and effect. Such bonds and insurance must be maintained in full force and effect for the duration of the special permit. Eleven, the village reserves the authority to inspect the wireless telecommunications facilities in order to verify that the hold of the special permit and any and all leases, renters, and/or licensees place and construct such facilities, including towers and antennas, in accordance with all applicable technical, safety, fire, building, and zoning codes, laws, ordinances, and regulations, and other applicable requirements as permitted on the Village Code subsection 310-38T. Twelve, pursuant to the Village Code subsection 310-38, letter U, the applicant or its successors and assigns shall annually certify in writing to the village in Perrins by the submission to the Building Department that NIER levels generated by the applicant's antennas and related equipment maintained... Equipment remain within the threshold levels adopted by the FCC as calculated in the FCCRF Compliance Assessment and Report, prepared by Pinnacle Telecom Group. Dated January 17, 2012, the certified engineer need not be approved by the village, but he/she shall file a copy of his/her license with the Building Department. Any other changes? Christine, you agree with what I just read?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Board members, what's your pleasure?
I'd like the motion.
Motion to accept?
To accept the resolution as read and changed.
That, Rich?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is AT&amp;T/ New Singular Wireless Mar Lane Review Resolution for Recertification of an Existing and Previously Approved Co-location at the Mar Lane Telecommunications Tower. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 225 Block 1, Lot 10.421. Christine, you have any comments you want to make?
No, same as before. We've reviewed this draft resolution, subject to any changes we're going to learn about now, and we found this acceptable, so...
Okay, thank you. Consultants, any thoughts, concerns with this resolution?
None.
Without hearing anything, board members, would you like me to proceed? Read it? Is everything exactly the same I just read?
No.
Probably not. It's different.
No. I wouldn't want to make it that easy.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think so.
The majority of it is... It's also, although we have a practice of doing so, reading all of that, many of these are identical, and so you can... Everybody has it in front of you. I can simply point out the changes, and the board can approve it as modified without you actually having to read it all. It's not required. I think on this recertification, which is somewhat perfunctory in any event, provided all the necessary precursors to it have been performed, which they have been in this case, I don't really see a need for you to read it all unless you want to. Obviously, on most resolutions, I think it's better for you to read it so that everybody understands it as well as the public. But this is essentially the same resolution. It's a recertification. There's a couple of changes here that were unique to this application that I can point out.
Okay. Board members? Fine with you with what Rick just stated? Or you want me to read it?
Yes.
It's fine.
Okay. Rick, what are the changes?
Okay, and the findings on page three, and I'm going to point out the pages, but as you know, sometimes in printing out, different machines print it out a little differently, and so it may... The page numbers may be slightly different, but it's the second paragraph of the findings that started with additionally that gets all stricken.
The whole paragraph?
The whole paragraph. The reason was, was that this was put in believing that it was left out of prior resolutions, but when we went back and researched it, it wasn't left out. This had to do with a different wireless approval. And so this whole thing of the needing an indemnification for falling ice was not in prior ones for this application, and so we should take it out. I will tell you that there is a general indemnification that's required by your code, and so they're going to be bound by that indemnification anyway. This was really more than belts and suspenders. It was like two pairs of belts and suspenders. So you have... You have the protection that you need in the village code, and they have to comply with that. So that finding will come out, and there was a related specific condition that was, I believe, prior number seven. It started with, prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance, the applicant must submit to the Building Department indemnification in favor. That all comes out. Again, it's because the code requires it anyway, and there was nothing with respect to this specific issue of the debris falling because of the ice. So that comes out.
So number seven comes completely out?
Yes. And now number eight becomes seven, et cetera.
Okay.
Going back, those were related, which is why I said them together. Going back to specific condition number three, similar to your other provision that you had in the last application, the end of that should say, except to the extent is specifically modified by subsequent resolutions. So it says that, essentially, this one is saying everything that was filed previously is also incorporated, and it's simply except to the extent is specifically modified by subsequent resolutions. And that is it. All the other provisions are identical to your last resolution.
Okay. Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept this resolution with the changes set forth?
I'll make that motion.
Hold that thought.
Christine, you're okay with what we just discussed?
Yes, this was raised with Kelly earlier today. We're finding it acceptable.
So, Robert, you made that motion?
I made the motion, yep.
I'll second.
Sandy, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Christine, do you have a card?
Next item on the agenda is Pomona Enterprises Public Hearing for ARB Review of Proposed Single Family Home Located Within the Subdivision Known as Woodbury Villas. This property is designated as a critical environmental area pursuant to SECRA and subject to the village regulations for ridge preservation. 310-13, said property is located at 18 Hudson Point and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 255 Block 3, Lot 9. Before I start, notice was published in the record on Friday, May 11. Couple of things that I noticed while reviewing the file. Just for the record, Mr. Lippman, your letter dated April 27.
Yes.
You notified us about the lot ME 53 with the new number. I have no problem with that. The only thing is with... Where it says Village of Woodbury, Section 255 Block 2, it's actually Block 3. I just want it noted for the record that the proper section is 255 Block 3, Lot 9. So I wanted to just make sure that correction is in the minutes. That's done. I was looking... I know we had asked for, but I didn't... I don't have it, and I called the Building Department. Revised ARB application with the colors and the name, the style of the... Style name of the home and the square footage. I need that. Have you submitted a revised one, do you know?
I checked with Betty the one.
Betty?
Not Betty.
That's 20 years ago.
This feels like a blown-up one.
All right, so I just need to make sure that we have that in there correctly, and we'll review that when we get to the colors. Also, I contacted... On the application, it says the property owner name is Joshua, and is it right? Am I saying it right? I checked on the county website, and it still shows the owner as Woodbury Complex B LLC. I, in turn, called the assessor's office, and she's processing paperwork from the county from January 2018, and this application is signed November 2017. So I need to know who the legal owner is, just for... So it's properly recorded. Do you know who the legal owner is?
I do not.
You do not? Come to the microphone, please. Okay. Now, okay. Gotcha.
So we're in contract?
It's in contract.
Correct. So if when we... If you'd like, we could correct that on the ARB application as well.
Yes, because so what you're going to do... Reach out to Maria.
Yeah.
And there's two forms you're going to have to fill out. Application to appear before the planning board, and being that it's a corporation, there's a secondary form that needs to be filled out as well.
Got it.
But you can contact her tomorrow and redo. So there'll be three forms that need to be submitted to her. All right? Now, with that being said, I know I gave you a lot of work to do tonight. We're going to... I need to call for a brief attorney-client meeting, board members, at this time. Mr. Lippman, just bear with me, and board members, let's hop into the back room.
Till hell freezes over.
Hey, you never know. All right. Do we have to have a motion, or just... We're just going to do that?
It's an attorney-client.
Okay. Up in the back. Do we need any other consultants, or are we just you?
We're all welcome to attend, but none are needed.
Okay. Gentlemen, have a seat.
Scared them in the room. You scared them into the room.
They're going into the room, I think, to be introduced to this decision that was made by the building inspector, I think.
Why would they not do that beforehand? That's kind of unprofessional.
It's too obvious, then. It's too obvious.
Look, don't forget this, look.
I ran that over. We don't understand. At that point in time, what was the... It was changing minute by minute.
Look, don't forget this, look.
I ran that over. In 17... I ran that over. We don't understand. At that point in time, what was the... It was... I ran that over. 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 I ran that over.
Okay. Where's Mr. Lippman? Did you run away on me?
No, not till hell freezes over.
Okay. Okay. What would you like to say about the application?
I have a presentation to make.
Okay.
It is not very long, it's just a bit over six pages long of live, of large font. So it's not gonna be very long.
So he could read it easily.
It's entitled, "Responses to Issues Raised in Professional Reports to the Village of Woodbury ARB." This presentation is made by the Architectural Review Board of the Village of Woodbury, the ARB, with respect to the application of ARP Pomona Reich residence for the approval of the construction of a single-family residence, Reich home, on the Reich lot known as 18 Hudson Point and shown as Section 255 Block 2 Lot 9 on the tax maps of the Village of Woodbury. The Reich lot is also shown as Lot ME 255 on a subdivision map entitled, "The Carteret Group WP3 Final Submission", filed in the Orange County Clerk's Office as Map Number 209-2007, the subdivision map. This presentation is made to demonstrate that the Reich home, as proposed, is in compliance with all Village of Woodbury code provisions required to be met to permit this board to approve its development and to address certain questions that have been raised by the memorandum submitted by H2M Architects and Engineers dated December 15, 2017, the first Lindsay memo and the second Lindsay memo dated May 10, 2018, and the Nelson Pope and Vorus LLC memorandum dated March 1, 2018, prepared by Stuart Turner, the Turner Memo, with respect to the application. The first Lindsay memo makes the following comments which should be addressed. The first issue is ridge preservation. The Lindsay memo advises that, to the maximum extent possible, the roof of the Reich home should not be visible from the designated ridge preservation view corridors and should blend with the hillside through use of the appropriate colors and screening. Response: The applicant, application has addressed those issues through the submission of the landscape plan and material samples. To the extent that the ARB may wish to change the proposed roofing materials and/or their colors, roof line and/or proposed building materials, the applicants are prepared to make all reasonable accommodations. Moreover, a large photograph showing the existing development along the ridge line in the vicinity of the Reich home has been submitted to the ARB. It shows that, to a great extent, the homes herefore developed within that area of the ridge line and in the 600-foot elevation are readily visible, notwithstanding their size. The landscape plan submitted by the applicant provides for the planting of 70 new trees where no trees now exist. It provides for countless other plantings which will minimize the visibility of the Reich home for far more than other existing homes. All of this will be installed at substantial expense. If approved, rather than adversely impacting the view corridors, it would serve as a standard for the effective protection of the ridge line and its view corridors. The second issue is the elevation of the building on the lot. The first Lindsay memo advises that the elevations of the building on the Reich home appear to meet all of the requirements but wants confirmation by the applicant. Response: The calculations indicate that the Reich home conforms to the 35-foot high restrictions, height restrictions, under CCOD Section 310-31.1.D4, as shown on the most recent plans submitted by the applicant's architect to this board. The average height of the building is 34.625 feet, which conforms to the 35-foot maximum permitted height. In the event that the Reich home is not in compliance, elevations can be redesigned to place the building in compliance. The third issue is the need to blend the Reich home with topography below the tree line. The Lindsay memo asks that clearing limits be shown on the revised site plan. Response: No clearing is required because the Reich lot has no trees and the plans submitted with the application show that no removal of trees is proposed. The fourth issue is the need for tree planting for mitigation of view corridors. Response: The landscape plan submitted to this board addresses this matter. It provides for the planting of 70 trees and other extensive plantings which substantially shield the Reich home from the view corridors. The fifth issue is the size of the Reich home. The Lindsay memo estimates that the size of the living space of the Reich home will exceed 7,000 square feet and that may not comply with the excessive dissimilarity regulations of the ARB. Response: As the architect has advised, the actual square footage of the living space of the Reich home is 5,848 square feet. As was explained in the memorandum dated April 25, 2018, which we have submitted to this board, CCOD Section 310-31.1.D4B refers the determination of the size of a structure to the planning board, acting as the ARB during site plan review. This application is now before the ARB for such site plan review. In turn, Architectural Review Board Regulation Section 88-5B provides that whereas here the ARB's approval of a site plan is required, the ARB may only disapprove a structure based upon its cubical contents, floor area, or height, where the structure is excessively dissimilar or inappropriate, to any other structure existing or for which a permit has been issued or to any other structure included in the permit application facing upon the same street and within 300 feet of the proposed site. Because there are no buildings either erected or for which building permits have been issued and no other structure is included in this application located on Hudson, on Hudson Point within 300 feet of the proposed Reich home. Sorry. There is no restriction on the size of the Reich home under the excessive dissimilarity regulations. The second Lindsay report dated May 10, 2018 does not dispute the limitation placed upon the board under Section 8-5, but suggests that the words "or to any other structure included in the permit application" could be construed to refer to the permit sought under the original subdivision application made more than 10 years ago, rather than the current application before the ARB. I believe that a fair reading of the provision leads to the inescapable conclusion that those words refer to the current application to the ARB. However, under whichever construction of the term "permit application", the board may adopt the term "permit application" is modified by the following restriction on the structures to which the ranch, the Reich home, may be compared. That comparison is restricted to those structures facing the same street and within 300 feet of the proposed site. The proposed site is 18 Hudson Point. Under either interpretation of the term "permit application", there are no homes on Hudson Point within 300 feet of the proposed site, either built or for which a building permit has been issued. There are no homes to which the Reich home can be found to be dissimilar and there remains no statutory authority for the board to disapprove the Reich home because of its dissimilarity to the, as to cubical contents, gross floor area, or height. The only other limiting, the only other regulations limiting the size of the Reich home are the 35% maximum lot coverage and the 35-foot maximum height restrictions. As explained in the April 25, 2018 memorandum that we submitted to you, the Reich home is in compliance with both requirements. The Turner Memo raises these issues. The first issue is the trees along Hudson Point. The Turner Memo notes, I've only got a page and a half left to go, so be patient. The Turner Memo notes that one or more, one more tree should be added to the landscape plan along Hudson Point. The response is, we can and will add an additional tree. The second issue is the location of the driveway. The Turner Memo notes that the driveway has been moved into the 15-foot side yard on the Reich lot and may prevent a tree from being located between the driveway and the neighboring lot. Response: There is no provision against driveways being placed in side yards and the bulk regulations require only a 10-foot side yard. If the board wishes to have a tree placed between the driveway and the neighboring lot along Hudson Point, we can move the driveway slightly to allow a tree to be planted between the driveway and the neighboring lot. The third issue is the need for a plan showing adjoining lots. The Turner Memo requests a plan to show the Reich lot and the adjoining lots to demonstrate if the plantings shown on the landscape plan mitigate views of the ranch Reich home, excuse me. Response: The application includes a five-page schematic view of the Reich home which shows how the plantings will dramatically mitigate the appearance of the Reich home from the adjoining lots. The fourth issue is whether the size of the Reich home footprint requires an amendment of the subdivision map. The Turner Memo indicates that there is a 74% increase in the size of the Reich home footprint over that of the generic home shown on the subdivision map and asks if the increase in size may require an amendment to the subdivision map. Response: The building shown on the subdivision map was simply a generic structure shown to demonstrate that a conforming building could be built on the lot. Under the legislative scheme in the Village of Woodbury, the final approval of a home to be built is delegated to the ARB to be approved or disapproved in compliance with its regulations. Therefore, no amendment of the subdivision map is needed or provided for in order to review the size of the Reich building. That review as to the size of the Reich home is limited to whether the home is excessively dissimilar to other buildings located on Hudson Point and within 300 feet of the Reich building. There are no such buildings, therefore, the Reich home is in compliance. The fifth issue is whether the size of the footprint of the Reich home is too large. The Turner Memo indicates that there is a 74% increase in the size of the Reich home footprint over that of the generic home shown on the subdivision map and asks if the size of the footprint is too large. Response: The Reich home meets the only regulation pertaining to the maximum size of a home's footprint, which is contained in the bulk regulations limiting lot coverage to 35%. The lot coverage proposed is 33.4%. By that, no, beyond that, no authority to regulate the size of a home's footprint is delegated to the ARB. The sixth issue is the retaining walls. The Turner Memo states that no grading plan was submitted and recommends that reducing the extent of the retaining walls and providing a different fence. The response is that the grading plan was submitted. Reducing the extent of the retaining walls would be counterproductive. As shown on the landscape plan, it is these retaining walls which allow the placement of the extensive plantings, which serve to eliminate visibility of the Reich home from the view corridors. Further, the proposed plantings also serve to minimize the visibility of the retaining walls. The applicant has agreed to change the fence. And that is the end.
Gail, are you gonna need a copy of that?
I will give you, I will give you more than one. I'll give you seven.
You can give them all to Gail so they can be recorded with the building department. I'm sure that will help you, huh, Gail? Can you just give a copy to our attorney for right now? So he has it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
He just gave us some recently, too.
Okay. Are you done with your presentation?
I'm done with my presentation. Somebody may have questions, though.
I'm gonna go to my, actually, being that this is a public hearing, did you bring samples?
We have.
ARB samples and you bring a map to put up so anyone from the public can see it?
Sure, of course.
Did you bring samples of the, for the house and the roof colors and whatnot?
We did not. It was, according to the understanding of our last meeting, we were gonna try to get through the issues here.
Okay. All right, so, being that, you're gonna, you're going to be revising, I just wanna make sure that the ARB application is correct. The roof you have is rustic black?
Actually, if I may, we, we, I said last time, the actual color renderings we have is exactly the way the house is gonna be. So the color renderings are basically the samples. It matches the application that you have there. Our color renderings match that perfectly. So if anybody from the public wants to see it, the exact colors are on it.
But our procedure is, we're supposed to have the samples here so if the public wanted to see them, they could. That's our way we do things. I just wanna make sure that the manufacturer is Tampco, style is architectural, it's called rustic black. We don't have a booklet to show us that's what you're doing. The exterior wall is saying S2O, fine sand finish, color cloud. The windows are Pella Proline, says black. I don't think we've ever had a black trim on a window and they have to be non-glare. These are non-glare windows? All of them are non-glare, correct? Can you please stand up to the microphone? Being that this is ridge preservation, all these windows must be non-glare windows.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're doing black trim on them?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And the trim on the building is STO, fine sand finish, cloud. I don't have the square footage on this application. Can someone tell me what the square footage is so I can put it on my notes?
It was, it was in the presentation that we just gave.
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight.
That is correct.
With a finished basement of additional 31.49.
No, no, no finished basement.
So now you're changing it from last meeting? It's not a finished basement? Last meeting you stated it was finished.
I think the confusion may be that on the plan it says living space.
Living space, that's what it is.
It didn't say a finished basement, it simply said living space.
So if it's living space, is it finished or not finished?
It is not finished. The basement will not be finished.
No, no living space.
Not finished is what she's asking.
But on the-
That's whether it's finished or not finished. It's not finished.
All right, but the question is livable space.
Livable space.
So Alan is saying that you will not have livable space except in the two floors. All right, so that will be a condition of any resolution of approval.
All right, thank you, Rick. So then, that map is gonna have to have that livable space removed from it.
That is fine.
All right. Okay, board members, all right, let me... Rick or Dennis, who wants to take it next?
Dennis can take it next.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'll start. Couple of things, not trying to repeat what Mr. Lippman said, but there were, there was, at your last meeting, you asked to have a site inspection. So you did have a site inspection, actually it occurred right before the meeting. The board went out there. I think everyone was there, I believe. No, I think Rich wasn't there.
Rich wasn't there, yes.
But you observed the site and as the applicant said, there are no clearing limits required for that site because it's a fully cleared site. You observed the grade. The grade falls steeply away from the roadway. That's shown on the plans and grading contours, but obviously you got an opportunity to view it. The applicant had marked the corners of the structure. They had marked the area of the retaining wall and just through visual observation and discussions, the board was able to see how the property would be situated when they filled it in and as they're proposing with a retaining wall. The retaining wall, we said, was going to be 26.3 feet high. At least that's what they've shown in the drawing there. And so tried to vision how that would look in the back and the visibility of that and then the house. And that was the purpose of the meeting on May 2nd and I think everyone came away with some kind of understanding about how it was gonna be viewed on the site. As far as our reports, there was a first report that was based on the limited information we had. The applicant supplemented that by providing additional details and then our memo of May 10th came out and that was based on the clarifying information that the applicant provided. Although we carried a lot of our comments over, some others we were able to clarify based upon the information provided by the applicant. And in that second memo, we have, we didn't refer to 7,000 square feet. That was a guesstimate based upon information that we had available. Now they provided information on the livable space and we did note for you that the first and second floors are 58, or 5,858 square feet. And we gave that as a comparison so that you may be able to compare that to the, the structures that have been approved previously. Because most of those structures, again, did refer to the first and second floors. And so that's for comparison for you. We did note that the living space, as, has been clarified now. The living space was listed then, basement, first and second floors. That was 9,007 square feet. But that's been clarified now that it's 5,858 square feet of living space on the first and second floors. Your ARB-specific requirements do have a requirement for you to review excessive dissimilarity or inappropriateness in relation to other structures existing or for which a permit has been issued or to any other structure included in the same permit application facing upon the same street and within 300 feet of the proposed site. We do take a different stance than Mr. Lippman on the review of that. I think the "or" to any other structure included in the same permit application was one that came out to me. But in the review of this by your building inspector, he went into it more depth and I think that Rick has some comments on his memo to the board. But I think that he agreed, basically, in the analysis, that you are entitled to review this within the context of the overall approval and the overall development. You have reviewed and approved, I think, 55 or so units now and I think they have basically established some kind of a standard for the size of the structures. And right under the, this section in your code under ARB are the, are the features that you're supposed to review. And the first one is cubical contents. The second one is gross floor area. The other one, height of building, this property- The other one, height of building this property complies. And then they talk about any other significant design features. I think the cubicle content and the gross floor area are one that you should be considering. And if it's 5,858 square feet versus the range of units that you've already approved, I think that might be appropriate. You've approved models ranging from 1,298 square feet up to a maximum of 3,700 square feet. In terms of the other significant design features, the only other one that I know that it's significant here is the walls. The walls are large in size and height, and they would be necessary for this development because of the size of the house and because of the need to provide a backyard area that, you know, for foundation there. So that's a significant design feature that you should consider when you review ARB for the various features and the excessive dissimilarity or inappropriateness. Other than that...
Dennis, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
In regards to the retaining walls, that you're saying that it's 26.3 feet tall.
Total height, that is.
Total. What is the, because there's only two, two wall sections.
There's two tiers, yes.
Two tiers. I know in the past, I've always heard you say, I've always heard you say four on four for a wall, for a retaining wall.
That's when, there are two different criteria. One is if a wall is a maximum of four feet height and it's stepped, I think it's stepped back by four feet, it doesn't require an engineer's design to be submitted for the design. That can be naturally done as a gravity wall. But it requires that you cascade back. They don't have the opportunity to do that here. The height wall that they have will have to be an engineered wall, it'll have to be submitted and it'll have to be approved. It's not prohibited. It would depend upon the technical aspects of the site.
I'm sorry to interrupt you like that.
That's okay. I think that I addressed in the report, or we addressed in the report, the points that were raised by Mr. Lippman in his memorandum. We tried to address those. But quite frankly, they all, they all reach back to these issues that I've already discussed. I have not talked about the mitigations. They have proposed mitigations for the walls, and that is through extensive landscaping, and that's what they're proposing. I'm going to defer that over to Jonathan, because they have proposed a number of things along that vein, and I think he'd be more appropriate to answer that.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan?
Jonathan Lockman, I'm here tonight for Nelson Pope Forhis. We appreciate some of the responses to our memorandum that we prepared on March 1st. We had a list of eight things in our analysis. We appreciate their willingness to add an additional street tree. The original subdivision approval, Stewart had worked to create a boulevard pattern of street trees down the entire street. So even though it seems like one, one tree more or less, you know, isn't a big thing, it would cause a gap, so we're glad they're, they're willing to add a third tree along the front. As far as the 74% increase in the footprint compared to the subdivision, we were just trying to provide you with yet another metric, that it appears that this house is bigger than the others, depending on, and there are many different ways you can look at it to come up with that, with that conclusion. But I don't think that necessarily an amendment of the subdivision approval would be necessary if the ARB allows a larger house, as they've stated. We would, they do seem willing, under number four, to move the driveway a little bit north to provide a little more space to the, to the house that will go in next to them and allow for that extra tree to be planted, and we appreciate that. We understand that it's not required to go the entire 15 feet, but if it's moved enough to leave room for a tree to grow, that'd be great. And as far as the planting and the walls go, when we were looking at this back in February, I didn't have a grading plan, and I wasn't able to figure out the, the height of the wall at that time when I did my review. But now we understand it's two, two walls with a total of about 20, 26 feet. I think that if a different fence other than chain link is at the top of the wall for fall protection, that will be an improvement, and we're glad that they're willing to do that. But in a way, the, what they're saying is that to have these, these two walls and the extensive filling, that enables them to do the planting, that will mitigate the house and the walls themselves. But to me, that's a little bit circular. I think that if, if there are a way to fill less and have a little less wall height and fewer plantings, we might, we might prefer that. But I think it all depends on your discussion as to whether the house is going to remain at this size, whether any of that would be possible. Then on number seven, we too, I think, were sharing some of the board's concern about the appearance of the windows, and that some of the large windows we were suggesting may be broken up with mullions to soften their appearance, that there isn't a large, a very large expanse of glass that could catch glare and that it would fit in better with the character of the village. And on number eight, I believe the, the roof color and construction materials are already under discussion, so I don't think I need to add to that.
Question for you, though. Muted roof color. Do you happen to know what the original colors that we, that was approved many years ago? That's one thing I couldn't find my old file.
I, I did not see that in the record. When I was looking in our historic files at our, at our firm, honestly, I was focusing mostly on the landscaping plan.
Okay.
Back at that time. But I don't remember seeing a specific roof color called for in all of the houses.
Yeah.
Or a range of colors, just other than that it'd be compatible.
Yeah. I know, we did have a range of colors. I know definitely we, it was, being that it was ridge preservation, like you said, muted colors, I know definitely there was no red, no white roof and...
I think each resolution had an attachment to it, and I think you were, you tried to be fair to the applicants. And I don't think you picked one color, I think you picked a palette of colors. And then occasionally you pulled one color out, if you didn't want a red or you didn't want something. So you would approve a heritage blend, but exclude two or three, and it was included, it was attached to the resolutions of approval that Rick's office prepared. So I think attached to those resolutions is the best place to find it.
All right.
Yeah, because I didn't see anything like that in the subdivision folders, in the files under the subdivision, but probably it makes sense that it would be in the resolutions for the houses that were approved afterwards.
All right. Thank you. Rick?
Well, as you know, Gary Thomasberger issued a written interpretation of a portion of the code dealing with dissimilarities, because that became an issue in a prior meeting. And so I had asked Gary to review those provisions and give an interpretation. He has done so in a memorandum of May 7th. I was away on vacation, and so I neglected to send that to Alan until very late this afternoon, when I realized that that had not gone out to him. He was not in the office, apparently, which, I'll excuse him for that. And so he did not actually receive it until tonight, when I handed him a copy of it. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Gary looked at this issue from the point of view of not only this application, but generally interpreting the code with respect to dissimilarity. I'm going to read just portions of his opinion, but as I have done on many other instances, when this board receives an interpretation from Gary as to what the code means, this board is bound by that interpretation. This board is not, does not have the ability to say, well, I just don't agree with that interpretation. Because it's Gary's job and not this planning board's job to interpret the code, your job is to apply the code. There is a process that is available. If an applicant or any other aggrieved party does not agree with the interpretation, they can appeal that interpretation to the CBA. But this board is bound by Gary's interpretation. And he opines in part as follows. The limitation of the 300-foot comparison is only applicable as a basis for ARB disapproval. So if you were to disapprove it, then that's an element that you should consider as part of your disapproval with respect to the dissimilarity within the 300-foot. Gary continues that the 300-foot comparison specifically does not apply if the ARB is approving the application or if it is conditionally approving the application subject to special modifications. So you basically have three choices with respect to this issue, and that's either approval, disapproval, or conditional approval subject to special modifications. And Gary said such modifications might include reducing or increasing the size, height, gross floor area, or other modifications of the application. He then says, more fundamentally, the purposes and findings of chapter eight are not, of the zoning code, are not limited to deterring excessive dissimilarity or inappropriateness of homes only within 300 feet of each other. The stated purposes of these chapters are much broader in their scope. A clearly stated purpose is to ensure that the ARB's review prevents, among other things, excessive dissimilarity and inappropriateness of the exterior appearance of buildings in a quote neighborhood, unquote. Because both the quote immediate area, unquote, within the neighborhood, and the quote neighboring areas, unquote, to that neighborhood, will be adversely affected by such dissimilarity and inappropriateness, including improved and unimproved properties. And then he concludes, it says, it is my opinion that sections eight dash one and A314 dash one require the ARB to consider in its review and analysis the excessive dissimilarity and appropriateness of the exterior appearance of any proposed building design element, including but not limited to its overall size, sometimes known as cubicle contents, gross floor area and height. This review must be done in the context of the neighborhood in which it is located, as well as it, as its impact on neighboring areas. Further, the ARB may condition any approval, adding subject modifications that would alter such elements to the extent necessary to ensure its appropriateness and lack of dissimilarity in that context. So that's Gary's opinion. If you have questions, I can try to reconcile your questions in the context of Gary's opinion.
Anything else, Rick?
No, just that there was a GML referral, and the referral said it's a local determination.
Okay. Board members, since this is a public hearing, do you want me to see if there's any members of the board, the, excuse me, members of the public that would like to speak?
Yes.
Before we decide. Gentlemen, I'm going to ask that all three of you just step away from the podium for Anyone in the first row would like to speak on this application?
On this one?
Anyone in the second row?
I thought you were talking about the other one, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Anyone in the third row? Anyone at all, anyone at all in the room that would like to speak on this application for public hearing? With no one coming forward, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Chris?
Yes.
Any discussion, board members, about closing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I was going to ask Jonathan especially, with the landscaping plan, what percentage of those trees are going to lose their leaves and what percentage will, you know, are evergreens that are going to stay green to mitigate the fact that, you know, it's wide open?
It would take me a little while to, to, excuse me. I don't think that's a question I can answer on the fly. I've got the L701 plan sheet here, and if you look at the planning schedule, you know, there are, there are some, there are both deciduous and evergreen trees under the trees. And it looks like many of, you've got your spruces that are evergreens, locust, dogwood, red bud, serviceberry, maple, oak are not. Then I'd have to look at the numbers of each tree and the heights of each tree and, and come up with that. I think that my sense of this landscape plan is, I think what really matters, I mean, the landscaping does a good job of, of mitigating the large walls and the large house, but I think that really the bigger issue is if the house were made smaller, the walls could be smaller and you'd need less plants to mitigate.
So these plants are basically shown in the drawing, fully grown. I mean, how, how many years would it take to, to reach some of the heights that we see here?
Well, the, the pictures below, yeah, have full-grown samples. So if you look at like, the second row, the third one from the left is Quercus palestrus, which is an oak. When it's planted, that pin oak says it's going to be between two and a half and three feet. And I can't tell you how big that picture is, but obviously it's, I don't know, 10, 15 feet. So the, if you want to know how big it'll be when it's planted, it's in the third, the fourth column of the planting schedule on the right there. And the, it is absolutely true that they are showing, you know, specimens that might be 10, 15 years old, but, you know, in the photographs below.
Okay, thank you.
Sandy?
In, in Gary's interpretation, where, I guess it's on the second page, the second paragraph, where neighborhood, immediate area, and neighboring areas are in quotations, so...
That's because that's, he takes that from the code itself.
Right. So there's no, there's no calculation as far as how far a neighboring area is from a neighborhood as compared to an immediate area. Correct?
Correct. The only specific lineal calculation is with respect to that 300 feet under certain circumstances. But the general purpose is, talk, do not talk in terms of things that are only in 300 feet. Talks about the purpose of this statute and the ARB regulations of dissimilarity, among other things, is to ensure that there is not dissimilarity in the neighborhood or in those areas that could be affected in nearby neighborhoods.
Okay.
And so, neighborhood is not defined as to how far that goes. So I think that, that's not necessarily unusual. There are many times that words are not specifically defined because they need to be considered in context. A neighborhood in the context of WP3 may be very different than a neighborhood where you have five or six acre lots, as to what is considered to be a neighborhood. So I think it needs to be looked at in context. So you, Gary is saying that it's, you know, the neighborhood is the relevant inquiry and its impact on nearby neighborhoods.
Okay.
That it's, it's not just the 300 feet.
Okay. And then, Mr. Lippman had said that there's no restriction as to the size?
But what he is saying, and this is, and Gary takes an opposite opinion, Mr. Lippman is saying that if you interpret... is saying that if you interpret the statute to say that the only comparator for this home must be within 300 feet, since there are no homes either existing or approved within 300 feet, then there is nothing to compare it to, therefore it cannot be dissimilar to anything. Therefore, they have no restrictions on it whatsoever. Gary takes a contrary opinion in the opinion that he has given here.
Okay.
May I expand on Mr. Lippman's?
No, she, no. She's asked me a question. The board now is going through comments. And I'm responding to a question from the board member.
Thank you. And then Jonathan, you had talked about the chain link fence?
Yes.
And you said you'd like to see something other than that, than the chain link. What would you like to see? What would be?
I think that a vinyl fence or wood fence would look better than chain link. I think with a fine home and a large expense to install quality landscaping, that the chain link isn't up to the quality of the rest of the landscape plan, in my opinion. I wanted to just take a moment to just add to Rick's comment on the neighborhood. As a planner, I would say the neighborhood is the subdivision, not just...
A road.
A house within a few hundred feet. And also, I think that the problem with Mr. Lippman's interpretation is that if somebody happened to buy a vacant lot that had a 3,000-square-foot house next to it, and they bought a vacant lot that was next to an existing house, they would be required to, you know, match in size or be compatible with that house. But if they happened to buy a lot that's in a large area with all vacant lots where no one's around yet, and the nearest house is 600 or 700 feet away, then their size isn't limited. I don't think that really makes any sense. I think you really do need to look at the whole subdivision. It's just an accident, in a way, that this particular subject house lot doesn't have houses on either side of it. Any other, many, many other house lots that are available might have a house next to it within 300 feet.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Chris?
The question I have, and I'm not sure to whom I should direct it, but...
One of our consultants?
One of our consultants. So go for it. Upon doing the site visit, and, you know, I've been up there even prior to the site visit for numerous reasons. I mean, it appears that those particular lots on that road, especially south of, from the, south of everything to the, if you're looking at the house site to the right of it, it sounds like, it looks like they're all going to be challenged with some kind of backyard wall or support system or shielding, whatever, or just enough to stabilize the lot as well as the future construction. Is it, is it the size of the house that dictates the size of the wall? Or is it, I mean, is it the topo? Is it all of that stuff combined?
All of the above. It's the topo. Obviously, if there are some lots there that are more gradual in their grade, they won't have to build up a wall as much. If this house was a little smaller, you might see a smaller wall because it wouldn't have to go back so far. So they're, they all add on to one another. It's a matter of degree. There, the code says, under rich preservation, you're supposed to blend in the best, you know, to the extent practical. This is one where the extent practical is going to kick in because you're going to see this. And the question is a degree, and that's what you're looking at. I think that's what you're looking at now.
Yeah, it seems to be just this row. And it's, I don't know how many remaining lots.
Well, I don't know if it's just this row. This row's the one that's before you now. There are others, if you go up on Route Six and you look down, you're going to see some other properties too. Those are the houses that are a little bit smaller, so I guess it's a little less of an impact, but that's for you to judge. Those, the ones that I recall now, I don't recall a wall of this height being built on the site now. There are some small walls around, and some of them are in backs of houses. So the house blocks, you don't see it. So...
Yeah, I'm just not, I just don't recall having such a dramatic topo issue on the rear as much as they appear to be on these sites. And I'm not sure how many of them exist that are remaining, but, so whatever visual impact is going to be, whatever we decide to do is going to have an impact on the remaining lots. Is that true? To the extent of the size?
To the extent, this sets a precedent, I don't know that it does. I think you're, you can review, but if you approve a house this size, I suppose it has some impact, certainly could. But I think that you might look at, it depends what they want to build, too. If they were going to build one of the houses that was already approved, I think they went in for a building permit and they provided some grading to that, and it would have to be a wall. That would go before Gary, and Gary would review it. And if it's within the context of the approvals, I don't know that you'd see it again because ARB's been completed. Unless he determined that there was some other feature, okay, that had not previously been reviewed that should be reviewed by the board, I think he could direct them here. But if a small retaining wall, this may be a matter of degree. But there have been some small retaining walls that have been built here that haven't come back to you. Probably four footers or eight footers, you know, tiered, and they've gone through.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Rich?
Yeah, I just have a, I guess I'll call it a protocol question either for our chairperson or our attorney. Mr. Lippman was handed Gary's letter tonight. Does he get to respond to that, or there is no discussion?
But it's up to this board whether to allow an applicant to, additional time to submit anything. But you have to realize the purpose of it. It's one thing to give additional time to submit something so that it could better inform your decision-making on issues that you have discretion to go ahead and issue many of your various findings and determinations. With respect to an interpretation of the code, once Gary has issued his interpretation, you're bound by that. It's just as if it was said, just like Gary said it in the code, and just like anybody, if the code said it's 35 feet and it was for a height restriction and it was very clear that somebody said, well, I want you to change that to allow us to have a 37-foot, regardless of how you calculate it. There'd be no way for you to say, all right, go ahead and try to convince us that it should be 37 feet rather than 35 feet because the code said the maximum's 35 feet. You can't change that. It's the same thing with this. When Gary has issued an opinion like this, this, for purposes, right now, that's as if the code said those words specifically. You're bound by Gary's interpretation.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Is that it? All right. I have a few questions, so bear with me. Visibility-wise, I was up at top of Route Six. I was down by 32, but coming out of Woodbury Common and looking up to where, when we did the site visit, there's the two rows of evergreen trees. And the one that's, the first row, the south one, and I'm imagining the home there, I need to know fill that's going to go into this area. And when I mean fill, the road is at approximately 970, what do you call it, degrees? With the, what do you call it?
Elevation.
Elevation, thank you. The road is at 970 approximately. The front of the, the front door, entry porch, is going to drop down about eight to about 962 elevation. This is approximate, I don't, I'm just giving, it's an eight, it's an eight-foot drop from the road to the front door, approximately. So if you do that, and if you look at the back of the line of where the fence is going, on the map here, the last dotted row for the wall, it's at approximately 926. So if you go from 962 to 926, you're looking at plus or minus a 36-foot drop. Now, take that 36-foot drop from where the ground floor is supposed to be. Understand, you're going to put a basement, and then you're going to go out. You're going to have to fill that in with something. One, where is the dirt coming from? Because no dirt was supposed to be transported into this, into this development, this whole neighborhood. I have to verify that. That's a lot of fill to me, to put, to level, because when you have a ground floor and you're going to come out, I believe you're coming out from the basement to the grass in the back. So now you're dropping down to, it's about 942, 940. You're filling in, and I'm having, I'm trying to...
We haven't asked them to do an analysis on that. However, some fill would probably come from the excavation for the foundation.
Okay.
There's some that'll be available from that. I don't know if it's a balanced site. If it's not a balanced site, not each lot is balanced. They're trying to balance the subdivision. So there's stockpiles of earth around. I don't know if they would get it from that or they would purchase separately. But if it's a net deficiency, and maybe they've run the calculations, but if there's a net deficiency, they'll have to purchase it or get it from someplace else.
Yeah, we would abide by any, obviously we'd abide by any code.
Okay. Because I'm looking at one of the pictures, and it shows the home, but it's, the whole house isn't, it's, it drops this way, and the house doesn't go down, the house levels off. So I'm concerned with the site from where that pine tree was and moving over and trying to figure out this 5,800-square-foot home. Good night. Rich has a, take care.
I think really those are building department issues, and Gary will review that. The foundation's going to have to go down to virgin soil or come up on controlled engineered fill. Generally, in situations like this, we see the foundation's extending and they build it up and they pour a slab inside. But that would depend on how they want to present it to the building department for review.
All right. But with also that visibility, whatever fill is put in, the fence, the walls, and the topo that is going to be, now you're creating, instead of the whole hill from the top of Hudson Point gently sloping down, you're going out and then boom, the water's going to run off dramatically. So how do we, do we worry about the runoff, or do we let Gary worry about the runoff on this property with the potential of fill and building the house, foundation? That was one of my concerns. Because it is a 36-foot drop in topo. And that, to me, is quite concerning because I never did the numbers until this afternoon, and I'm like, okay, how do we, how do we handle that? The other thing is, with the 5,800-square-foot livable space in the first and second floor, we approved years ago maximum homes of 3,750. Where the applicants were proposing an additional 2,108 feet additional living space. It's not half, it's what? It's not, no, it's not even 50%. 50% would be 25, that would be 28. So it's maybe 40% increase. How do we, as a board, with dissimilarity and, I'm having a problem with that because I was here for when this was originally approved. I lived through this, and I know what we went through with size homes. And being that this is what we call ME, middle end, Dennis, we had different lot, different areas within this neighborhood would be able to substantiate the different sized homes. And I would, correct me if I'm wrong, but up by Hudson Point, I thought the mid-sized homes were supposed to go in there. I could be wrong because we did have a variance between 1,800 and 3,700, and I thought it was a midpoint.
You had homes that were designated for the senior housing, and you had homes that were designated as otherwise. I don't recall a distinction between the ME and the HE properties.
Okay. So, you know, those are my concerns with the visibility for sure. Because after I did the site visit and looking out, and I'm, the back of the home is looking out towards Route 32. And then looking up from Route 32, you're going to see this. And I guess when we were doing this plan many years ago, and going back to what Chris said, we never envisioned, I guess fully, when it's on paper, it's one-dimensional. We don't, we never visually thought about it as three-dimensional, how it would look on a hillside with the homes. And that's bugging me right now, and I don't know how to solve that issue because there's a lot of discrepancies here.
Well, now it's a pre-existing issue.
If I may speak to this matter for a quick minute?
Just give me a second.
Sure.
Just give me a second. So these are my concerns, and I guess you said, as Dennis said, Gary would have to figure out how we're going to, because the home needs quite a bit of fill to go from side to side because it's a patio, there's side porches, there's the driveway, and I forget the driveway drop-off is 960. So we're still dropped, the driveway's going down at least 12, 15 feet. And I know our driveways, roadways are, was it 15, 15 feet, Dennis, or 15?
Percent?
Percent? So I don't know what the, you know...
I think we allow a 15% for a short stretch. I don't know that that's, they're going to have to comply with that code requirement.
Okay.
The bottom of the garage door is at 968.
968, yeah. But the garage door, but the drive goes down to 966, which is two feet.
They've listed seven and a half percent on the plan as a grade, and that would be within the code requirements.
All right. And then on the plot plan, number 10, we just, I know we just, we said it was a basement sewer service to be served with ejector pump where necessary, which is a gravity system. Am I correct in...
No, that's not a gravity system. I think they're proposing a gravity system. I think that was put in error, or they're going to use the easement, as I understand it, in the backyard area, which goes down to the next block.
All right, so number 10 will probably be removed from there?
Well, we've asked that that be removed. We're trying to avoid the ejector pumps.
All right, so that's to be removed. And then...
I don't think the applicant had any objection to that, right? Okay.
Okay, so that's going to be removed. All right. And the proposed, or retaining walls about four feet in light of required to be designed, but, okay, we're going to take care of that. I have notes all over the place, so just bear with me. Code, there's Dennis's memo. It was a nice rainy day today, so I was inside reading. And 26 feet, we talked about, we talked about that. All right, that is enough for right now with the building design. All right. So you have answers, questions, go for it.
Sure. Do you mind? Just, I wanted to just talk about our meeting that we had, so we had that meeting. Can you use the mic?
You have to use the mic, yes.
Just, I'm going to refer back to the site meeting that we had because I was the representative of the site meeting. At the site meeting, again, this is, this is an illustration, it's an actual picture that we took. It's kind of taken from like the Woodbury Commons area, looking up at the, looking up the hill. You can clearly see, I mean, dozens and dozens of homes with plain views without any sort of mitigation at all, which we are proposing. I mean, just, these are, this is the spot where our home's going, so when you're looking up the hill, you just see dozens of other homes in front of our home. But besides the point, I want to just point that, and we were there, I pointed out many homes that are currently built that are well beyond this 3,700 number. I'm not sure where this 3,700 number's from and where it's being enforced, but we could pull some of the building department's records and show you there's homes that are approved well over 4,000 in the same development. I want to also bring to everybody's attention that if we're talking about neighborhoods, as you drive up Hudson and further, not more than a couple thousand feet, you can see very large homes in the neighborhood, larger than our home, that we're proposing. So this has to all be, it doesn't make any sense to us. I know for a fact that Lot 36 is approved as like 4,900 square feet plus. So if you're looking for like a median to say, okay, well, we've only approved 3,700 square-foot homes, it's not a fact.
Excuse me. Don't say it's not a fact because it is in resolution. If there's a problem with the building department, we will take it up with that. But it is a fact, 3,750 feet was the maximum square footage that this board approved over the years. That is a fact.
Right. I didn't refer, excuse me, I didn't refer to the board. I'm referring to the township and the village and the building department, whoever may be.
Well, I'm not going, we can't let that lie either. We did have a meeting, the chair, myself and the board attorney with the building inspector and asking that. He says that the houses that have been approved have been those that have been approved by the board. There are nuances to those houses with covered porches and different things of that sort. There are nuances to those houses with covered porches and different things of that sort. But his answer was that he is approval was approved by the board.
What can we foil?
As far as livable space, yeah.
Livable space.
No, no, no.
That he approved, not the board, right? Is that what you said, Dennis? That he approved?
That's right.
Yes.
That Dennis approved, not this board.
Well, not Dennis. Gary.
Gary, well...
I don't get that.
Building department.
But he said Gary approved what the board approved. Isn't that what you're suggesting?
Yeah. So we, I guess my question to you, Dennis, is Lot number 36, this board members, I guess you want verification what that was approved at, with square foot, square footage?
Yeah.
If that's 4,900 square feet, we need to know that.
Okay.
Because I can't make a decision, because I know what was approved from this board, this planning board. I guess I'm the only one here that...
No, I don't... Maria, if I may, I...
Go ahead.
You know, we have nothing to go on, other than what we're hearing this evening based on one lot. What I would like to see, if that's the case, and that's how we all sense it to be, then we need to get an analysis done of everything that's existing that may be in question and find out what's, what the situation is.
One of the things I wanted to talk to, Mr., I think it was Mr. Scibelli suggested or asked whether we would have the opportunity to respond to the letter that we received for the first time tonight. I would ask the board to allow us to do that. I trust that this was an honest mistake, and, but Mr. Golden has raised issues that need to be addressed. I obviously don't agree with him. I have to say that what we're dealing with, and I think what this board seems to have... We're dealing with a unique regulation, and that's the Architectural Review Board. This board is not sitting as the planning board, per se. This board is sitting as the Architectural Review Board, because the code assigns the planning board to sit as the Architectural Review Board. That being said, you have to change your hat to review what the Architectural Review Board provisions of the regulations provide. In this particular instance, the Architectural Review Board provisions of the regulations provide for the ridgeline issues and what we have been calling excessive similarity or excessive dissimilarity. These are issues that have been delegated to this board. It has not been delegated to the building inspector, because the building inspector has his job under the regulations, what has happened. And I would like to present this in a legal opinion. Again...
First, timeout. Can I have your name? Because I can't find it on my papers.
Joseph Haspel, and I'm working with Mr. Littman in this particular proceeding.
Thank you, just so I know who you are. Gail, you have that?
I appreciate that. So I think, you know, I think, I think as I was saying, if you get two lawyers in a room, you get three different opinions. But what we have here is a situation where we have a regulation that created an Architectural Review Board. There was a case out of White Plains, New York, which was to determine what an Architectural Review Board can do and what excessive dissimilarity means. Whatever we're talking about, if we're talking about a difference of 4,000 feet to 5,000 feet, this board would have to determine that that is excessive, excessively different. Not that it's different, not that we don't like it, but it is excessively different. Moreover, the code says it has to compare to that which is in 300 feet from it.
Okay.
Now, these are all issues of law that I'd like to present to the board. I don't...
Excuse me, I'm going to hold you for a second, because I know you're helping Mr. Littman. Are you an attorney?
Yes, he is.
Yes, I am.
He is, okay. I just need to know that.
Fine.
Excuse me?
Fine.
I don't blame, because if you trained him, then he is.
He's been training me for 40 years.
Okay. Being that, we're not a judicial board here. We are the planning board, and we are the ARB board, which is all in one.
It isn't. That's what you're, you should get a...
Excuse me, excuse me. Rick?
The planning board under your code is designated as the ARB board. So it's the same personnel.
Yes, it is.
But it's a different board.
Excuse me.
Same personnel, different board.
You know, I can, we can put, we can postpone this to another meet night until we figure out this, all these issues. Or I can call the board right now to see what kind of a resolution they want to go with. Can I please have my attorney speak now?
Sure.
Thank you.
It is the same personnel for the planning board and the ARB, except in this instance, you are acting as the ARB and not the planning board. However, contrary to what counsel has stated, is that you don't get to just decide what the code says and what it doesn't say, when you have an opinion by the building inspector who is charged with interpreting the building, the zoning code. The building inspector has interpreted the code, and you are to follow his opinion. And that's the end of it. And I, you know, there's no lawyer I know that would give a contrary advice with respect to the role of who interprets the zoning code. And you are bound by that, in my opinion, and the opinion of case law.
Who else on the applicant wants to comment on anything that the board members have said?
I have one more comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. So we've, I think this is our third meeting that we're here. And at our first meeting, again, our second meeting, we were very clear, and I'm going to just reiterate, that we want to appease, and we want to try to mitigate any concerns that the board has. And we still at that same position. We've spent untold sums of money, I don't even want to get into it, on the different professionals to present us the best we can and to keep adding dimension and mitigation. We're willing to take everybody's suggestions into consideration and continue moving forward in that direction.
Board members, what is your pleasure at this time? No one wants to.
What's the options? So what I mean...
Well, the options were, as Rick stated before, we can approve, disapprove, or approve with...
Subject modifications.
Subject modifications.
Conditionally approve with subject modifications. But you can also, I mean, if you want, you can afford the applicant more time to submit other information. Whether or not you think you need it is another issue, but you certainly, that's another possibility.
So there's four options.
Okay. Give the applicant more time and see whether we can also have some modifications.
Sandy?
Well, at this point, I'm not really sure how much more the applicant can give us. I mean, the house is the house. The retaining walls are the retaining walls. The elevation is elevation, et cetera. I have, since the beginning, had, and I've voiced that to you, that I've had a concern about the size of this house. Whether or not the basement is finished, the first and second floors, it's... It is, it's over 50% larger than the largest house that the prior, this board that I was in on approved at 3,700 square feet. I think the house is beautiful. The lot is absolutely, there's no other view like that. However, to me, it's almost like setting a precedent in the reverse. If we... A house this size, according to your argument, now sets the precedent for 300 feet on each side of it. So that's why I really, I don't agree with your argument. But I would be willing to, you know, approve a house, but with conditionally, conditionally approve it with modifications as to its size.
Is there a consensus among the board?
Well, I'm trying right now.
Right.
Chris?
Maria?
Clearly, this is a case where bigger is not better.
I thought it was always better.
This is, I, what I'm hearing and what I feel about, or what I interpret about this is, it appears that we do have potentially some latitude to listen to a modification. And if the applicant's willing to adjust or come back to us with something within a range or within a scope of what's, what we would consider reasonable, then I would, then I would be willing to listen to that. What that is, I don't know. Maybe we need more information.
Okay.
Well, can I just ask, Chris, this question?
Go ahead.
So are you, when you say reasonable, are you saying within what you have already, what the prior boards have already approved? Or are you saying...
What we have to go on is the fact that this board has approved homes in no larger than 3,750 square feet. That was the original subdivision, from what I'm understanding.
Right.
If there are homes that exist that are larger than that, you got to show it to us. I don't... We have to, we have to see that. So that's on you.
It also, and just so that everybody understands, just like it would be inappropriate to say that they had a 9,000-square-foot home as composed, as opposed to what you had approved up to 3,750, that would be an apples and oranges comparison, right? So I think when people talk about square footage, we have to make sure that we're talking about the same type of square footage, such as livable space, right? I think that was the comparison that was done by Dennis, was the comparison of livable space. Some of those homes may be larger as far as square foot, but not as far as what was approved for livable space. So I think it's very important that we be careful in our characterizations of what we're comparing. To your point.
Okay.
If I may?
Just give me, give me a second. So in what Rick just said, in the comparison of livable space with the additional basement that may have been approved from the building department, it may exceed the 3,700, but we don't know. So we have to get that, that approved. And I do believe, and I feel, that the 5,800-square-foot home is way too large for this area. So we need to come up with a average livable space that has been approved with prior, from the building department. And as Chris mentioned, it's, it's on the onus of the applicants, because they're stating that if there's homes that are 4,900 square foot, especially on Lot number 36. So to me, we need to have, we have to come to an agreement that this home is, is way too large. We have to figure out something. So far, that's three of us.
Yes.
You in agreement? So the consensus among the board, to answer your question, is yes. We feel that this is extremely, it exceeds what we know of as livable space of 3,750 square feet. So we have to come up with a comparison and an analysis. So whether you do it, and we have to verify it as well...
Well, yeah, I think Gary...
Gary needs...
I think Gary has to, if you, if you bring something back to the board that's showing 4,900 or whatever you said on the square footage, then Gary, we need to figure out what, how that was done.
Yeah. So at this point...
If I may?
I guess we're going with the fourth option, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
We're not approving, we're not disapproving, we're not doing a modification. We're giving you the, we're giving the applicant the option to review all the materials from what we've said, the memo from...
Gary.
Gary Thomasberger, the building inspector. And then we have to figure a way that attorneys can agree, and not agree to disagree. We'll have to come up with something. And livable space.
That's easy.
That's easy. I know, I know you'll make that work, Mr. Littman. You and Mr. Golden, go back a couple years, not a long time ago.
No, it's all...
Board members, is that basically?
That's it.
Chris? All right.
Yes.
So now, go ahead.
As the archi...
And you, you're the architect.
I'm the architect.
Okay.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to confirm...
You're David, okay.
Yes. And I concur with your, with the board attorney in terms of, we got to compare living space to living space.
Yep.
Okay? And basement, unfinished basement space to unfinished basement space. Because a 3,700-square-foot house probably has a 1,500 to 1,800-square-foot basement as well, putting it in excess of 5,000 square feet at that point. With that said, we are going to do our due diligence to find out the livable square footage on Lot 36 that was approved by, not necessarily this board, but was approved by the township building department.
Can you tell me, where is Lot 36?
Hold a map out. Okay. In, we could, yes. In addition to that, can the board give me any direction in terms of a target square footage? Because I had a discussion with the client. We are willing to reduce the house. I don't know if, you know, if the board says 3,700 square feet, that constraint is not going to work for the client and his needs. You know, but if the house on Lot 36 is 4,900 square feet, and we come in at 5,000 or 5,200, can I get some kind of direction from the board at this point?
I can't make an agreement to that until we get the numbers. I, I think our attorney would probably throw the book at us if we made that kind of an agreement right at this moment, with a laptop.
Well, you just have to, you have to live with what Gary's opinion is with respect to what is or is not dissimilar. How you're supposed to go about looking at that.
Yep.
And it entails a neighborhood, and how, an impact of something that's dissimilar on other neighborhoods. And it's not the reverse that was said before, simply because something is large in an adjacent neighborhood means that that dictates the size here. That just, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. The whole code is written with respect to the home that's being proposed and its impact upon the neighborhood and adjacent neighborhoods.
Look, Rick, can I just...
But if, but if, what you, there's nothing wrong with allowing the applicant to say
that the understanding of the size of homes within the neighborhood is incorrect, of the matter, the information that's been put before you, the data that has been put before you. So they can present whatever they want, you can look at that, and we can check it out. And, you know, obviously, this board wants to make its decision upon correct data and correct facts.
And if I may, what is the reason for the 35% lot coverage that limits the size of a home, then, if you're limiting it to a 3,700-square-foot house?
It's a different issue. Right? It's, there are several factors that go into a zoning code as to what the board of trustees that passes these laws says that we want this as the standard. And some of that is lot coverage, some of that is how much that we want to consider in lot coverage that has to be exempted out, such as wetlands, steep slopes, et cetera. What size of homes, the height of homes, those are all various elements that the board of trustees has codified and said, this is what the planning board must follow. And when it is subject to some interpretation, then it's up to the building inspector to interpret the code, and then this board follows that interpretation.
So you're agreeable to go back to your client, we'll do some research, and we'll all come back together?
Yes.
The attorneys, do you want to go through the attorneys, or do you want to go through the engineers, or do you just submit everything, and then we'll come back?
They are going to try to find ways, and I don't mean this in a pejorative sense, ways in which the facts that you have been relying upon are incorrect. So that's their burden, that they have to present something to you, which obviously we will check with the building department and determine not, determine whether or not what they're saying is correct. Because you want the correct facts upon which you are going to base any decisions.
Right. Okay.
Are you reading in terms of extending the term of this public hearing?
Well, we, we closed the public hearing.
You closed it?
Yes.
We made a motion to close it.
It's been closed.
I mean, I can, we can rescind that motion and keep the public hearing open, which we may have to do that, Rick.
Well, you need to do two things.[1774.01] Well, you need to do two things. One is, you can reopen the public hearing. But you haven't had any comments so far, and I think the things that you're talking about now are no different than the application that's been proposed, and potentially, it's less so if they come back with a proposal that, with a more modest home. What I would prefer, because there are certain deadlines.
Right.
For this board after the close of a public hearing, and that if you don't have all the information, you're just gonna have to make a decision at that point.
Right.
Based upon that. I think what makes more sense is for the applicant to waive the time in the code for you to make a decision after the close of the public hearing, allowing the applicant the opportunity to present additional information, and allowing your consultants time to go ahead and check out that information to, to ensure its accuracy.
Because normally, is, is this a thirty or a sixty day?
I'd have to check it, Maria.
Okay.
I wouldn't wanna take a guess, hazard a guess. But I, I, what I would want is for Mr. Lippman, as attorney for the applicant, to indicate whether or not he will waive the timeframe for which a decision has to be made under the code from the close of the public hearing.
Isn't it just as easy to undo the order right now or reopen?
Easy is one thing. For me to protect the board is another thing. There are cases out there in which I think that whoever litigates this case, if it is to be litigated, will take the position of some cases that say that you cannot leave open a public hearing for no reason other than to delay the ultimate decision-making. That if there's nothing to inform the board, then it should be closed. And so, I don't wanna be caught where we say, yes, we'll reopen it, and then get challenged later on by the fact that we reopened it. So, I think an easier method is for.
Certainly, we're not making that challenge. We are looking at possibly coming up with some solution.
Well, one, I think a reasonable thing, and we, we do this, and I think you've been part of these in the past, but many, it happens with many applications, where they extend the deadline for a reasonable period of time, we're not asking for an unending timeframe, so that we delay all of this. But I think that if you extend the timeframe for whatever would be under the code for an additional sixty days, and then if that's not sufficient, we'll deal with it at that time.
That's fine.
Okay? So, the record should reflect that Mr. Lippman has agreed to extend the timeframe for the board to make a decision after the close of the hearing by an additional sixty days from that which is provided for in the code. Thank you, Ellen.
See, can you run this for a minute? I gotta run this. You can, just listen to Rick, I'll be right back. Right.
That's good. I get quick answers.
And brief ones, this, excellent.
I like that.
So, the applicant is in agreement with everything?
Well, that's a pretty broad statement.
Well, I mean, everything that was just said, as far as, we're not going to reopen the public hearing, and Mr. Lippman has waived the.
Right. So, the public hearing is closed, but your time to make a decision has been extended an additional sixty days from what it would be under the code.
Okay.
Our opportunity is to persuade them.
Correct. But realize that my advice to the board will not change that Gary's opinion is the one that they have to follow, just like they have to follow the code.
May I give you some more?
You can give me whatever you wanna give me.
Thank you.
Okay. And the board's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So, they will.
Do we need to vote on anything?
I don't think so. We'll see them at the next. Sorry about that. No, I get overheated, I get nauseous. I'm good. I'm good. So, we're gonna.
So, with their dust.
The sixty, all right. Mm-hmm. You scared of running out of the room, huh?
Just so we have an understanding, I'm not gonna submit it, one, because we're gonna now go back to him and sort our analysis, I'm submitting that again, but it's not gonna be this plan, you follow what I'm saying?
But you still have to have this proper.
Okay, right. I'm saying I can't put square footage and stuff on there.
Right.
Be doing.
Right. The square footage, I can understand.
It'll just be some sort of vague application.
But those three, those three forms need to be filled out.
Did you have to wear my, at least a shirt or?
We'll find it.
Oh, okay.
It's on road H, if I may.
Okay.
It's called Road H. No road that's going on.
Next item on the agenda is Bagel World of Woodbury Review Application. Review application received for ARB, a proposed signage for retail store located in a strip mall at two seven three Route thirty-two in Central Valley. Said property is known in the village of Woodbury, tax maps to section two three zero, block four, lot four point one. And I apologize for stuff now, I just, it's, I'm overheating up here. I'm like, before we start, did Maria reach out to you this afternoon?
Yes, to two eleven this afternoon, I had a email from her.
All right.
And I have the two forms.
All right. You can give them to Gail, 'cause we'll have to get them to Maria, she'll have to. The two forms that Mr. Cassessa is talking about is the planning board application with the ownership form. We only received the signage application, we never formally received a planning board to, application to appear before the planning board. And the ownership I picked up on was, it was a corporation, so I needed to have the, the form or the letterhead, so that's what was just submitted to Gail. Rick, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions before we even start. This is an unusual application for us right about now. Does this have to be Gmail submitted? Or Dennis, whoever wants to take that one?
I'll be starting, Rick.
Okay. Because.
Required.
Not required? Beautiful. And.
Yeah, so.
Municipal law, section two thirty-nine dash L through dash N, and it requires certain referrals to county agencies and others, also two thirty-nine dash F, before they can have the ability to go ahead and act on anything.
You should make bagels, it's a lot easier.
I didn't write this.
Okay. And then my next question, because this is such an unusual application, does this have to go to public hearing, or can this board waive the public hearing on this? Because this is about signage, which, to me, is, I understand about the, the freestanding sign and what it has to be.
Public hearing is required.
It has to be required.
And everyone, and everyone you've had before this, and there's some small ones that's a problem, because some are so small, we talked about trying to do it automatically, but Rick advised that under your code, you have to meet and. It could be something that you ask the board of trustees to change the zoning code to allow you a waiver under certain circumstances. We talked about that.
Right.
I think if we're allowed to do that, that may be something you wanna do for something like this, so they don't have to come back to two meetings.
Where's Natalie? Would she like to write a letter to the village board requesting that? Thank you. All right. So, where's Jerry? Oh, he's running away now. You need your glasses, I understand. Just let the board know why you're here. I tried.
Hi, I'm Jerry Cassessa. We're the GCs that built the store for Bagel World, right in the Central Valley Mini Mall. There was an existing sign box. We took the sign box, it's two foot by eight foot, and installed.
Is the microphone on?
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on.
It just had to be closer.
Yeah, just all closer, thank you.
So, we ordered a new sign to go into the sign box, and that sign has the corporate colors, which is their identification, their logo, which happens to be green and purple. And we put that up. When we went for the building C of O, Gary had indicated that he thought it might be required to be white and blue, like the rest of the signs. So, they said that we had to come make the application today to have the architectural review board review if the purple and green signs could stay. I guess we had a memo that was sent to me yesterday from H to M, and they basically outlined that, they had a couple of questions for us to confirm. But one, they indicated that the, the background of the project, it was approved in nineteen eighty-nine, and I guess that predates your records or maybe zoning. We have two signs that we erected. One is on the building, they're calling it a wall sign. It's a sign box erected onto the man side of the building. And the other one is a freestanding sign, it's like a pylon sign, I guess. It's kinda small in size. They wanted to know the freestanding size, the freestanding sign, the actual size. The space that, that Bagel World has is six inches tall, forty-eight inches wide. The overall sign stands about eight foot tall. It's four feet wide. That's to the center of each post, so it's slightly wider as far as the structure. The sign space now that has the identification of the mall and the other tenants, in total is three foot eight inches tall. So, it indicates that, you know, as long as it's under twenty square feet, it would comply, and it seems to be that it is under twenty square feet. So, we're not doing anything to that freestanding sign that would make it non-conforming to the zoning regulations. The wall sign, same question was asked, to confirm the size of the sign. Our small application for the sign showed it was two foot high, eight foot wide. That is the actual size of the sign box, and that sign box was existing. Three of the signs on that, on that facade are the original two foot high, eight foot wide. The new bank that came in is larger. I don't know what size it is, but I assume it's twenty square feet instead of the sixteen square feet that we are. As far as the sign colors, Bagel World, they have four locations, and they're trying to develop a franchise. They have a good product, they've been business a long time. In nine, in two thousand thirteen, they went and started the process, they hired whatever professionals they needed. They devised a logo, color scheme, and that's the way this new store has been built. The purple, it's grape color, and, and the greens accents, it's inside the space, and it's also present on all their logos, menus, and advertising. They didn't know, we didn't know, that there was an issue with the color of the sign, or we would have probably tried to do this ahead of time. But now the sign is up, the store is open, and, you know, what I see here on this memo, it talks about, I guess, the previous application that we heard, talked a lot about excessive uniformity or dissimilarity. There was a section eight point one that the author of this memo indicated. It concludes, it says, "It is the purpose of this chapter to prevent these and other harmful effects of such exterior appearances of buildings erected, and thus to promote and protect the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the community, to promote the public convenience and prosperity, to conserve the value of buildings, and to encourage the most appropriate use of land within the village." I don't think the purple and green sign, in our opinion, is gonna do anything to adversely affect the neighborhood, and we just respectfully request if we can keep the sign the way it is.
Sorry. That's a.
I mean.
We don't, we're not laughing at you.
No, no, at all.
The reason why, the reason why I asked the questions I did about waiving the public hearing, and the GML and all that, is because the sign code says a maximum of three colors. And in the printing world, as I've been duly schooled on at one time before, white is not considered a color for a sign, believe it or not. So, your sign, so I'm, so to me, there are three colors on that sign, on the freestanding sign, and I'll, and when there's a logo, and I spoke with Dennis about this earlier today, you take Wendy's, it's red and white, it's the face of a young lady. You go to Chili's, it's a chili, and it's the red letters. When we go to the mall that's down by Rose Place.
Yes.
All those signs are different colors, if I'm not mistaken, of each business. They're not, they're not blue and white, or red and white. They're all different individual colors.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm grappling here, because I'm gonna either, Dennis or Rick, I need help with the sign law, because if the sign is, if we had to make the freestanding, the freestanding sign blue and white, and leave the sign on the building, I don't know where, where to go with this, with the board.
That's fine.
Some of the background that I gave you was that, just wanna set the, the tone for this, all right? And looking at the areas of the signs, there's nothing that the board is approving that's not in conformance of the sign law, or that Gary has an interpreter is replacing an existing condition. Yeah, this is not a variance situation, this is nothing along those lines. So, that's part of what the memo is, just starting, not setting a precedent there. Gary believes that this is a departure from what was agreed to by this tenant when they originally went in, which was blue and white. Gary thought that perhaps that was, that was even recommended by the tenant, but establish the look on the building. This does change the look on the building. Gary thought that that would be within your purview as the ARB, neither up or down, just simply within your purview to review. There are certain sections in the code which refer to the number of colors that you might have, particularly on the directory sign, which says a maximum of three uniform colors. But it's, it's an ARB issue. We've attached all the regulations for ARB, and as you can see, they lend themselves more to structures. However, you have used ARB review, but when you've talked about ARB, any length it has been because you had a building like Central Valley Properties come in, which has a, a number of signs that are proposed. You're gonna look at that, you're gonna look at the, that and the entirety of the building, and how it's gonna be presented. You've done it for Kohl's, you've done it for large signs, all right? This happens to be a sign change. Usually, when sign changes come in, Gary reviews them, and they don't come to you. The only reason this one came, comes to you is because it is somewhat of a departure in terms of the color, and I think that's really what's before the board, whether you think this color is excessively dissimilar to the point where it creates some of the things that Jerry talked about, that's right out of the purposes of your code. And I think that, I, I believe that's what's before you. I don't know if Rick has anything to add. Well, you also can't approve anything that is not in conformance with the code. So, if the code says there can be no more than three colors, even if you considered it not dissimilar, you can't approve more than three colors for that, that sign, for that monument sign there. That's just for the sign, let me just read that section.
I believe that's just for the freestanding.
That's for the freestanding, the multi, well. It's the multi-tenant directional sign.
And if that, if that is what needs to be done, that is not part of the store, we'll change that one at the pylon, or the freestanding sign to, to blue and white. It's just the identification of the store itself, so that's fine.
Okay. The other section prior to that says that no more than two typefaces exclusive of logos should be used on any one sign, and the number of colors used should be kept to a minimum, and should be chosen to create a harmonious appearance, and a maximum of four colors on any one sign, with the exception of multi-tenant directory sign, which permits a maximum of three uniform colors. So, we've talked about the multi-tenant. The other one is a limit of four, that's on one sign, so I don't know that it matters whether there's four building signs, as long as one doesn't contain more than four colors.
Right.
And to that.
It just has to have a harmonious appearance. So, that's what Dennis was talking about before. That's within your discretion, the harmonious appearance concept, the quantity of four colors for a regular sign, three colors for the monument sign, that's something you can't vary. But whether or not something's harmonious is within your discretion.
Okay. So, we have the logo, which is a different type set, and then we have two other fonts, and two colors. So, I think we comply.
Well, just, all right. With the multi-tenant directory sign, it says, "which permits a maximum of three uniform What is a uniform color? Red, green, blue, yellow, but not white? That, that's what I've been told in the industry. White is not considered a color. I don't know how this, what is, what is the board consider as a uniform color? I'm, I'm being a stickler here.
I know you are, and it's actually, it's not a, it's not a, I don't think it's a silly question or a silly proposal. I don't know if Gary has determined what is or is not a color, but typically, as I understand it, certainly in physics, there, you know, there are colors that have a point on the spectrum, and they have a particular color. White is not a color that has a point on that spectrum, if you will. It is simply all of the colors on the spectrum, just like black is the absence of any of the colors on that spectrum. So, one could argue, unless Gary has otherwise determined it in the past, that white is, is not a color. I don't, I just don't know what Gary has. I, I would hate for you to go ahead and approve something, saying white is not a color. Gary believes that white is a color, regardless of physics. This is where physics may not apply. You know, always applies. I always thought, I always thought black was the absence of color, but.
It's actually black and white, to be honest with you.
White is, wait a second. No, you may be right. White is the inclusion of all colors, black is the absence of color. That's right.
You split white with prison.
And because that's also in web designing, white and black are not within. And because that's also in web designing, white and black are not with the, because I know of a sign personally that has the white background, red, blue, and black lettering on it. Now, if you take, if you take over by IHOP, you have all different signage on that side of that building. You go down to Rose Place, each one of those signs up above are a different color, different, but their directional sign, the multi-tenant one, is all blue and white.
Yeah. And I think, isn't the other one just down from there in the next little strip where the Asian, the restaurant, that's blue and white also? Yeah, I think, because I remember the ZB.
We're fine with the blue and white for the road sign.
Yeah.
We don't need to worry about that if that's, you know...
All right. But all that being said, Chris, you haven't, you haven't opined on anything here.
Well, the only...
I know.
As a, as a, as a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, I know that there's a committee that has been put together that's going to overlook the whole entire sign law and make some recommendations to the Village Board as a result of the changes that have occurred over the last 30 years. You know, because things change. This building has been there since the 80s, if not sooner, earlier than that. When it was approved, I'm sure it was approved with some kind of symmetry, not colors you can't use and colors you have to use. But now we're being asked to interpret something or give our opinion of what's existing?
No.
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I think what you're, first of all, I think the issue with the tenant sign has gone away because you're going to agree to go blue and white for the tenant sign.
If that's a directory, yes, that is correct. Okay. Multi-tenant sign, yes, that's correct.
But, and so...
But wait a minute, did we ask him to do that?
I did.
You did?
I think they volunteered to do it in order to...
What I heard was that that directory itself could not contain more than three colors.
That's correct.
And our two additional colors, whether you believe white is a color or not, would make it three to four colors. So to not get involved with that, we said, "Fine. We'll make that blue and white."
Well, if that's what you want to, if that's what you want to volunteer, fine.
We're going to volunteer. It doesn't, it's...
That's how I understood it. They were doing it in...
We're going to choose your battles. I mean, we really need the sign on the building.
I have to start working at 1:00 AM to start making bagels, so I'm willing to compromise that sign.
And so what, in response to Chris's question, putting aside that sign, now you're talking about the other sign.
One more color on the sign.
And I think what they're saying is that they have no more than two typefaces exclusive of the logo. Now, you have to look at it, but that's the, the representation. And it should be chosen to create a harmonious appearance, appearance at a maximum of four colors on any one sign. I believe that they believe that they have no more than four colors. So the question really comes down to whether you believe that this is going to be harmonious in its surroundings, right? And that is not something, you have to have a public hearing, so you have to let the public in on that, and then you can make your determination. If you believe that it's harmonious, given what this is and what the surrounding signs are, and it's no more than the numerical quantity of colors and logos and typefaces, then you can go ahead and approve it.
After the public hearing.
To me, that's...
Okay. So all we're being asked tonight is to move this, move this forward if we're in agreement with what's being presented, and then...
Well, if you, if you have a general consensus that you think it might be appropriate, you can schedule a public hearing, you can authorize a resolution and be prepared so you can conclude at your next meeting.
Okay.
So those are the two things maybe you could do.
Very nice.
If you're asking me, Madam Chair, that's my opinion. Let's move forward with...
My opinion is...
Do you agree with this?
Yes, absolutely.
Sandy? All right. So I'm just going to let, so we're understanding the applicant will do the freestanding sign in blue and white. The board isn't agreeing that the sign on the building can stay as is?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
All right. If that's the case, I'm going to offer a motion for a public hearing on May 30th and authorizing the attorney to draft a resolution of approval. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you'll be, I'll try to put you first as a public hearing, barring all our housekeeping that we have to do for the 30th, depending on what I have on the agenda as well.
Okay.
If the branch group is here, maybe.
We'll work on it.
Do you want us to give you a...
Maria should have that. Yeah, the color running, it should really go to Maria. Oh, the other one.
Jerry's got a question.
I'm listening. Go ahead.
Do you want us to give you a proof of the replacement sign for the multi-tenant location?
That would be helpful. You can submit that as quickly as you can.
Yep, we'll have it.
And I think we'll waive that for right now so we don't, because it, you have, supposed to have everything in two weeks before the next meeting. Talk to, talk to Dennis or...
You're not going to be able to get it in two weeks before the next meeting because that's today.
I know, because I'll bring it today.
But if they get it in by Friday for this type of limited application, that should be satisfactory.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else that you want to ask us? You want to go home now?
Oh, I...
All right.
All right, thank you.
You got to cook the bagels, right?
Yeah. 1:00 AM.
Yes, thank you very much.
I don't have power at home, and I'm...
All right. All right, so that's done. Have a good night. Thank you.
I put there a fresh.
I tried. All right, next application. This one should be fairly easy. He's up there yet? Gardens at Harriman Station, review amendments to adopted scope document for the proposed transit-oriented development. Said property is located on State Route 17 in the Village of Woodbury. That is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 243, block 1, lots 1 through 25. Ms. Esposito, what do you have for us? All right, Natalie, we're going to make that the first item on the agenda, okay?
I think it's what you have for us.
After Pomona.
Yeah. Could you turn that down to, um, thank you. Oh, dear Lord. I'll put everyone first, no problem. You see, I only brought minimal paperwork, so let's keep this light.
I can keep it really light.
Good.
As you know, this board adopted the scoping document for the gardens back in August 2nd, 2017. Since that time, this board had made some recommendations to modifications to the zoning code to the Village Board of Trustees. The Village Board of Trustees is in the process to reviewing, reviewing those recommendations. They've prepared a local law, local law number six to address those items. And what the before you, what's before you tonight is that there's a, a proposal to amend the adopted scoping document to include the required zoning amendments in the various locations within the scope.
That's it?
That's all I got.
Dennis?
I'll be shorter.
I knew you will be.
In reviewing their application, making the, preparing the DEIS, they saw some items that are required and went to the Board of Trustees. You reviewed the proposed amended changes that went to the Board of Trustees from council. We also made, prepared a memorandum and sent it over as the village engineer requesting a few changes. They, in keeping with the modifications from the zoning code by the Board of Trustees, you now have a, an amended scoping document, which only changes on six pages, and it simply says that they're going to review in the DEIS the amended changes to the code and include it in their review. And I don't have anything further.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Remarkably similar remarks to Dennis's, but I could just add that the changes are on pages four, nine, 13, 14, and 39, if you want to look them up.
Done already.
They're very small changes.
Yep. Okay. Board members.
You got an attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not good. How quickly, I forgot.
Chopped liver here?
No, never.
I just wanted, just very briefly to assist you in this.
Yes.
All of those changes, characterized generally, simply say that in addition to everything else they were going to study, they're also going to study the introduced local law as to the zone changes. That's all it does. It changes nothing substantively in the scope, simply requires them to also consider in the DEIS, which you will review as lead agency, the zoning changes that are being requested.
Thank you. Board members, have you had a chance to review those five pages with the changes on it?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any questions or concerns about them?
Not here.
What was that?
No, not for me.
Not for you, Sandy?
Uh-uh.
With all that being said, we just need a motion, we don't have to have a public hearing?
That's correct.
No public hearing needed, okay.
Nope. Not on, I mean, if, if in fact you were going to go ahead and alter it in substance as to now they're going to add, you know, a carnival, or they're going to build a high-rise, then yes, I'd say you need, go ahead and need to go ahead and do that. But this is just very perfunctory things that they would do anyway, and they actually could go ahead and just study it. But I think it's proper form for you to go ahead and amend the scope so everybody knows what the scope is and they're required to study, since you are now lead agency as well for that local law that changes those zoning code.
Okay. With that being said, I'll offer a motion that we accept the amended scoping document with the five pages duly noted to the scoping document for Gardens at Harriman Station. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Ms. Esposito? You want to go home?
We'll work it out.
I'm going to hang around for a little while.
Sure, join us.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. I can't get up at 5:00. Come on. I have to work at 6:00. Thank you for coming out. Have a good night. Thank you. Okay. Have... The 30th? The 30th. Okay, I'll, I'll see you. What do we do? Approve scoping. Bless you.
Bless you.
That's the chairperson for the Harriman Planning Board. All right, next item on the agenda. Aon, review status of site plan and special permit for and discuss completed pedestrian safety plan and supplemental traffic study for further consideration of seeker action for proposed 85-room hotel based on public hearing information. Said property is located at 100 Strata Road in Central Valley and is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 226, block 1, lots 212. I know you're going to recuse yourself.
Sure, I'm accusing myself.
We got to wait for Chris to come back. Can I? All right. Rick, I have to wait for Chris to come back to the podium?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, you will not have a forum.
That's correct.
Just noting that for the public.
All right. Oh, my Lord.
One of the adoring fans on YouTube.
Um, some housekeeping here, Rick and Dennis. I spoke to Natalie about adding on, looking at the introductory local law number five that we received from Rick's office from April 16th. I'm going to put that on the next agenda, just to follow up on it. Just to keep that in your mind.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, Ms. Blithko.
George Blithko, Jacob Witzigubitz for the applicant.
Jason Penagaro from, Penagaro and Doach from the, for the applicant.
If I may, we are returned after a slight detour, which took us approximately a year and a half. We're here to update you on the status of the application. We have had the opportunity to review memorandum from your planner and from your engineer. Jason is going to go through those comments. They are primarily engineering in nature. Jason and I have taken the opportunity to look through some other resolutions. We think most of these conditions, if not all, readily fit into conditions for approval. We are here to request conditional approval. I notice your agenda says we're here for further consideration of seeker. I'm not aware of any reason that further consideration of seeker would be required. You've already reviewed it once and reaffirmed that decision in December of 2016. I do not believe the plans have changed in any material respect. I'm not aware of any reason that seeker would be reopened, but we're here tonight to find out what your desire is with respect to the application and conditional approval.
Maria?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was reading my minutes from...
That's fine. I, I just want to comment on what George has stated, and I agree with him. I mean, it's, seeker is closed. There was a neg deck. There was lots of discussion as, and study with respect to whether or not seeker ought to be reopened. And there was a motion on December 14th, 2016 by Chris, not to rescind the negative declaration and have the prior negative declaration determination stand, and that passed three to zero. There was one absent and one recusal. So seeker is completed.
And one thing I would like to add, though, is I thought that the letter from Jacob Witzigubitz and Mr. Blithko stated that the purpose of their appearance before the board was to allow Jason Penagaro, the applicant's engineer, to review the open site plan items, explain their current status, and ensure that the board and its consultants are in agreement that the list of open items is complete. A few of those items may require a direction from the board or its consultants as to how they should be addressed. That's what I believe was the intent of the meeting. I don't think the notice is correct. I think it was a carryover from the prior one. That's the way we addressed our memorandum to them. We identif, or we went through the list of items that Jason had identified in an email that we received, and then we went through some other items to try to provide them guidance on things that we thought that they had not included so that they'd be prepared. But that's what we thought was the intent of the meeting. And after that is resolved and established, then you might be in a position to take an action.
Okay. Jason, go.
Sure. So I'm hoping to offer some resolution to Dennis's comments or how we feel that they could be addressed as far as the technical issues that are in regards to the site plan. Both the pump station and force main, the property is served by water and sewer. Unfortunately, the sewer itself is not extended to the facility.
Just so that you're aware, the memo between you and Dennis, none of us are aware of it.
No, no, I'm talking about Dennis's memo, or H2M's most recent memo, which is dated May 10th.
Okay.
Yeah, it's summarized in there.
All right. So the memo from May 1st that you had going back and forth.
Yeah, that was, you know, informal, asking Dennis to basically summarize, which he has done in this memo here...
Okay.
...to the board that we are in receipt of.
All right.
And so I'm just going to go through the, the technical issues. One is the pump station, the force main. As I mentioned, the property is in the sewer district, but not currently served by sewer services. So we're intending to build a pump station in force main. It's been reviewed preliminarily, and there are some specifics that need to be worked out as far as pump capacity and the exact force main routing, but we believe those are all things get, can be addressed as either condition of final approval or to be resolved prior to a building permit. And that would be similar, as George mentioned, we've reviewed some of the prior conditions of approvals for other applications similar in scope. And we'll use Cabela's as a reference, and that would be similar to their resolution 11 that was prepared for their conditional approval. Regarding the emergency vehicles and their access to the site, we did meet with the emergency services initially at the very early onset of the application, and we've been in contact with them throughout the process. We have additionally provided turning templates and turning movement diagrams throughout the site for a number of different vehicles. Off the top of my head, I don't recall each one, but I believe there was, we went back We went back and forth several times with that, so we're confident that we'll be able to accommodate whatever vehicles the fire department or other emergency services will require. And we think that's something that can be handled between our office, Dennis's office, and meetings with emergency services personnel additionally as a condition of approval.
Did you submit those turning radiuses to the planning board?
Yes.
All right, it's been a while. When was that submitted?
It was submitted sometime in two thousand sixteen in part of a review of the site plan.
All right.
It may have been later two thousand fifteen. At this point, I also don't recall exactly.
Yeah, that's...
But there wasn't very much change after early part of two thousand sixteen, so I would say it was in that time period. Gladly submit them again if necessary or directly to the emergency services personnel.
Let's all come through us.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
There was a concern with the entrance of the water line to the building in the riser room. You know, because we're using a pump station, we have, for our wastewater, we have some flexibility of exactly where the water and sewer can be placed entering the building. So we, we don't feel that that's a significant concern as to meaning to be resolved immediately. We did provide, as was required during the architectural review, exterior entrance to the riser room that the board's consultants felt that would be absolutely necessary. But that, along with the entrance of the water line, I think the concern with the water line was that for a length of time, or not a length of time, for a distance under the building, rather, it was going to be buried. But I don't think that is going to have any effect on the fire protection service to the building. But those things could be reviewed with emergency personnel, the building department, as necessary prior to issuance of a building permit. And I'm certain that Gary would review, or the building department would review those things regardless as part of the building permit. There was a concern regarding the drainage plan and a final review of that and the stormwater pollution prevention plan. The stormwater pollution prevention plan originally was prepared and reviewed a number of times. It was prepared for, initially for the site, and you're looking at two main factors there, quality or quantity and water quality control. It was prepared originally for the site that had, as you remember, quite a bit more disturbance and more impervious area. Those have been reduced quite a bit from our earlier applications. So we're very confident that we'll be able to accommodate any minor revisions that would be necessary. There was some concern regarding salt usage in the parking lot. There was testimony provided by the applicant's operator or prospective operator, who is still the prospective operator, who noted that there would be very little to know or none to very little salt usage as far as cleaning for the parking lot. There was a concern regarding any open ARB issues. The ARB issues, or any concerns with ARB, we had brought in a number of material selections. Boards were presented, renderings were presented. They all were found to be acceptable. We could, I believe that all of those items are noted on the architectural plans with their actual specific manufacturer and selected colors or other identifying factors are all noted on the architectural plan. So those would, of course, be provided to Gary, or the building department, rather, as part of the building permit application and would be able to be verified. But we can also prepare a formal material selection board that could be submitted as part of our final. But we think that that, all those things will be addressed during the issuance of the building permit. Landscape design is in conformance with the village's requirements. It's actually more robust than is required, and it's a function of the, of the flag that is proposed for the site, the hotel chain that's proposed for the site, and their requirements as well. So there has been very little comment on that in the last several iterations. So we don't feel that there's any need or any additional items that we wouldn't be able to comply with in regards to that. The H-two-M memo references their prior memo where there was a number of recommended conditions for actions. Those conditions that are included in there are administrative-type matters. They're not technical or site plant-type matters. It was noted in there that they could be included on the plans as notes to the, on the site plan as part of their approval. But I don't even think that they rise to that level. There was items regarding screening of employees and those types of things. I don't think those would typically be included on the plan itself, but would be included as conditions of their approval. Yeah, and of course enforced by the special permit, and we're glad to comply with that. So I think that summarizes the majority of the technical issues that we've found to be remaining.
If I could, I just want to comment on two issues, or two of the points of discussion. One is the need for a developers' agreement. We had volunteered to provide some improvements that were noted as deficiencies in the safety study. I think the original concept behind the developers' agreement is provide for performance bonds and maintenance bonds, things of that nature that you typically do with applicants. We would include those improvements that we're volunteering as part of the developers' agreement with the village. That is something which has to agree, be agreed upon by the village board and the highway superintendent as necessary and appropriate since it's going to be installed in the village street and it's being installed outside the boundaries of the project. The other point is there was discussion at some point during the review process about a consolidation agreement or consolidation of the primary lot and the additional lot, which was acquired by the applicant, which is along the thruway and is landlocked. That requires a fair amount of work, plan. What we are proposing to do now is simply to file a declaration which provides that those two lots will be kept in common ownership and only used for this project. I noticed that your code does provide a definition of lot that includes lots that are shown on plans. So I think it's clear that you can have a zoning lot being approved for development for a particular use which consists of more than one lot. And this is a parcel which does not affect any other parcel. It's basically bounded by the large Aon lot and the thruway. So I don't think there's any land use implication, and it really doesn't seem to be something that justifies the cost and expense of going through a consolidation process that seems to be voluntary in your code.
I'm going to refer that to our attorney on that, on that one.
I had the feeling you would.
Oh, yes.
Quite frankly, I'd have to look at that. It's always been understood that there would be a lot consolidation. And so this is something new, and I'd have to look into whether or not that satisfies the intention of what was discussed at the time. I just, I can't give an opinion on it right now.
Okay. Dennis?
Well, they went down through my memo fairly thoroughly, and so I don't know that there's much more to add to those items. Those are some of the outstanding items. In terms of the administrative items and the developers' agreement and the improvements off-site, the water and sewer, I think we'll deal with the water and sewer superintendent. But as far as the signage and sidewalk and other improvements along Estrada, that was to be a function of some of the pedestrian studies and the traffic studies that you had. Those were done by, not by John Collins, not by Mazer, but they were done by VHB. We sent over some of the reports. I thought we sent them all over, but maybe not, to John. So I'm going to defer to John on that because I think that you'll need an opinion from him, and so will the applicant, on the nature and requirements of those improvements so that if a developers' agreement is to be crafted, it can be based upon the facts and what's supposed to be required. Some of the other things that Jason mentioned still have to be sorted out with the water and sewer administrator, but that's not unusual for a final development like this. There are those open items for, for the fire department. I had it noted as the fire department was to review the turning radiuses. It may, in fact, be that they were submitted, but we didn't get any opinion back.
Right, right.
I'm not sure, but that, I just copied my note from last, the last memos that we wrote. And I think that those twelve recommended conditions for action, I usually don't get into the kind of thing that Jason mentioned, and I'm surprised if that was one of them. But I would think that would, you know, I'll have to look back, but when I looked at them, there were conditions, night sky, friendly lighting, zero-point-one-foot candles at property lines, things like that. Those are the types of conditions we generally recommend that you include, and I think that's what that was. Those would be items that they wouldn't have to amend the plan for, it simply could be conditions of approval. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jonathan, I know I said no report, but you did have a memo, and I can't find it right now. What'd you write? I know you wrote something.
You had just asked for, for an update, and I provided a paragraph update, which others have covered.
There it is.
But yes, you did not ask for a report, so I don't really have anything to add.
Okay. All right, Rick?
The only thing I'd really add at this point in time is I don't recall whether or not this board really gave the green light for ARB with respect to the application. It may well have. I just don't recall that. I know that there were submissions. But I don't really recall that this board said, yes, we're fine with all of those. But, you know, if at some point in time, whether it's this meeting or the next meeting, that you authorize a resolution, if that's your inclination, I need to know whether or not that includes an ARB or it doesn't include an ARB.
All right.
Yeah, I'll take a look at our notes, but my recollection is there was a lot of dialogue between you and the applicant regarding ARB, the signs, buffering the equipment on the roof. There are a whole number of things. You talked about colors, they gave you drawings. So certainly, there was a lot of discussion. Whether you, in fact, said this is all good now, I don't know. I may have that in the notes, but I may not.
Yeah, because the hearing was closed on March sixteen, two thousand sixteen. And my note on here says need paperwork, which means we needed additional information. And I only brought a partial, partial file with me tonight.
And if during the review of what, what actually happened a couple of years ago, if you want NPV to, to close any loose ends on landscaping plans or circulation or any planning matters, just let me know.
All right, so Dennis, if you can review and then get back with Jonathan, and then we can tighten that up about landscaping and...
Well, I think Jonathan probably ought to look at the last landscaping memo, just see that, whether they were satisfied or whatever it was.
Yeah, if you can, yeah, if you can do that, that'd be great. Rick, ARB, we have to look at that. All right. Jonathan?
Just so that, you know, obviously, there's the whole litigation and moratorium issue that's...
Right, I was going to...
...hangs as a heavy cloud. Under both of those things, the, you know, the applicant prevailed in his litigation. It's on appeal, but there's no stay pending that appeal. So the applicant is permitted to go forward. The moratorium exists, but the moratorium allows any applicant subject to the moratorium to continue at their own risk of going through the approval process. And any board has to review what comes before them. What the moratorium provides is that you are simply prohibited from making that final determination of an approval or disapproval. So that it's entirely appropriate to take it through the stage of directing us, say, to draft a resolution. We could do that, draft a resolution, it can be ready, but you simply can't act on it until the moratorium is lifted. And then, once the moratorium is lifted, I then have to advise you as to whether or not you can vote on it at that time.
Okay.
Depending upon the outcome of the moratorium, whether there's a new local law in place and whether or not that new local law allows this or any other particular application to be approved by you.
Okay. So we're at the point now, John, thank you for taking over for the traffic. The last time, I mean... At our December sixteenth meeting. I don't have, I forgot to pull the minutes on that, but where did we leave off with the pedestrian traffic?
Excuse me, as Dennis pointed out, we weren't the engineers and traffic engineer reviewing it. The last thing I find is I have the VHB memorandums and the last memorandum from VHB was dated December twelfth, two thousand sixteen, which is prior to that date you just mentioned. And it did have recommendations in that with respect to some safety improvements, including light structures, speed monitoring signs, additional signage, et cetera. So we just need time, you know, some time to check it up. And what I haven't been able to do is find the original reports that this was based upon. So I'm going to ask the applicant for the intuitive speed to forward that to me. If you could also, just so, to complete my record, just forward the copy of the turning tracks, and then everything is in process, in the review. There is one thing, as the board knows, that we just approved the mixed-use development down on Estrada and thirty-two. And that was not included, this development was not included in their report. And their development was not included in this report. So for the board, we want to make sure that the record is complete, and we have both of them. I think it would be unfair to ask either applicant to do that. So what, if the board agrees, I would suggest Mazer does that evaluation of Route thirty-two and ask Estrada to find out what the combined impacts are at that location for reference. If the applicant has no difficulty with that and the board has no difficulty with that, I think that's the quickest way to take care of that, unless you have a different opinion.
I, what I'll offer is that when we did our traffic study, there was, I don't know exactly which development you're referring to, but two other developments were included in our study.
It did not include that one.
A different one?
Just the bank building, that property.
This is different.
And it's right on the corner.
I'll ask that when you, when you do review our, or include that, that you consider whether those other two applications, which we did consider, are moving forward or not, because that may have some effect on the overall study.
Not only that, I'm also going to check the base data at that intersection because there was some discussion about that. Because we just recounted that intersection in eighteen, so we'll have the most recent data.
And I'll also offer that, at the time, VHB asked us to increase the counts by twenty percent just as a blanket increase to show a higher level, and that, you can find that in one of her memos.
Just see, I saw that request in here, but I don't, I didn't see that your response to it. In other words, I saw their answer.
Sure, I can provide those.
That study, that's why I have everything.
Sure, and also we'll provide the pedestrian safety study as well.
Yeah. The only concern I have is the fact that we had a situation in the last project that they did a count, and they found out that, when they went back and redid the count, that the traffic had significantly changed from what the previous one was.
Sure.
Do you want this copied, pedestrian safety?
I think it's best you send everything electronic to me, George. You have my email, right?
Yep.
All right, so what I, all right, so just...
If that's okay with the board, Maria, is that...
That's fine. So the only thing, I heard you going back and forth here. The project, you have the hotel, and now we have the new, the new project that is before the planning board on the corner of Estrada and thirty-two, which is a proposed mixed-use, two-story building. And we have to take in, now, when you were before us, two years ago, this wasn't, this wasn't, project wasn't before us, but it is now. And now that you're, now this is back on the agenda, I have to ask them to vice versa, look at both projects. The other projects in town, which are at south end of town, I forgot how far up we're checking with, we haven't gone as far with the TOD. I don't know if we can...
I think we're okay on the other, yeah, I think, I think this one, since it's on the same road, it's going to be easier for me to add the hotel traffic to the previous study because they have the multiple driveways that we already have the base. So it's just going to be adding your traffic to that base.
Okay, perfect.
I think exclusive, that mixed-use project that exclusive had was considered in ours, and there was a second project.
I believe it was Cabellus.
That was considered, so we'll, but we'll get that all for you.
If it was the Cabela project, Cabela's project, that is so far south and a different, it's...
Sure, me agree.
Yeah, well, the Cabela's project is off the, off the books, and what we have is the shops at Woodbury in its place.
Right.
So...
But they're still in a different geographical type area.
Right. And as, as you said, exclusive, they have not come forward, so I don't know what they're doing with that, with that report. All right, so we have to get more data together, so... So, we have to get more data together, so we have to wait for the traffic. So, Rick, what is our next? We have to review to see about the ARB, if we actually... See, it's been so long, I have to go through everything, and I still haven't been able to go back far enough to review every... What is our next step?
I think our next step is that we have some additional things to look at. One is the ARB.
Yep.
I have to look at the issue of now they're proposing to not have a lot merger, but a mere declaration. And Mazur's going to look at traffic issues after he gets certain information from Jason. And I think then, at your next meeting, you'll be able to get reports on all of those, and then you'll decide what you need to do depending upon the outcome of those reports.
I have, but May 30th, we have, we have quite a few already.
Yeah. So, it would be what would normally be your second meeting in June, but it's actually your first meeting in June now.
Correct.
Which is the 20th, maybe?
20th, because June 6th, yeah.
Right.
So, we're looking at...
I mean, nothing is slowing down this application or any other hotel application, because there's a moratorium that's in effect for a while. So, it's not like a month is going to make any difference.
Okay.
In that.
All right.
So, we'll, our office will have a report to you back with respect to lot consolidation issue. Jason's going to be giving information on the traffic. Dennis is going to look into the ARB issue, and...
If they submit any of those other technical issues that we talked about, and they want to try to resolve them, if they can get something in two weeks before the meeting, then we can try to resolve those as well, if we can.
Okay.
If not...
But I also agree, I'm sorry, Dennis. Go ahead.
No, that's it.
I also agree generally with what the applicant is asking for, in that there are a number of these outstanding items that if they're not resolved, I don't want to say all without looking at it more closely, but certainly many of those, if not all, are appropriate for conditions in a resolution. And whether or not it's a condition of site plan signing or a condition of building permit or a condition of CO, those are the things that we determine in the course of trying to prepare the resolution.
Okay. Go ahead.
If there are any conditions that, if there are any requirements that are not things which can become conditions, we would like to have those identified as early as possible, tonight or perhaps by memo, so that we can address them and bring them into a state where action would be appropriate. The other point is we'll certainly submit anything two weeks prior to the meeting, but what I would ask is since there is a gap in there of five weeks, if we could have an opportunity to review a draft memo in time to submit a response or modification for the planning board meeting, that would be helpful, I think, to everyone. If it's, if we have no objection, it's certainly something that will make your night a little bit shorter.
What you're asking is for engineer and engineer to work together.
Well, engineer and engineer, but also Attorney Golan would have to provide something two weeks prior to the meeting, which I think three weeks lead time might be adequate. I mean, at least try, is my point. I'm not going to make it. But it would be helpful if we could look at it in time to get a response back to you.
The three of us informally said, Rick, if you and Dennis can work with Jason on that informally, to work on a going back and forth, is that okay with you?
As long as the board wants us to do that, that's what we'll do.
Yes. So that when you come back on the 20th of June, we can have something...
Anything we do will be sent to the board as well. We try to avoid offline discussions with applicants. They're making presentations to the board. Our recommendation to you, really don't want to have that transferred over to us to negotiate with the applicants, because that's sometimes what it turns out to be. So, we will, if it's purely technical, which you generally rely on us for anyway, I think that can proceed. If it's something where there's a judgment call in that, I'm not going to negotiate it with the applicant. We'll present it to you, and you decide.
Yeah. Just send it to me, you know.
Okay.
And when you're reviewing the ARB, just review the landscaping, the sign and all that, that we, it's all in order, that we didn't have to follow up on it. All right? Well, we're all set?
I believe that's the first step.
Okay. Without being said, Sandy, you can stay seated. I'll for a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
(laughing).